We'll go ahead and call our February 9, 2015 meeting to order with the roll call, please.
Mayor Householder.
Here.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Here.
Commissioner Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hardy.
Here.
At this time, all who are able, if you'd please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance in the moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic of this great land, one nation under God, indivisible, with equal justice for all.
Thank you. So we'll take us to our awards and the proclamations, part of the meeting.
Item 3.1, the month of February 2015 as Black History Month in the city of Salina. Jamiah Evans will read the proclamation.
Ms. Evans.
Black History Month is an opportunity for all Americans to honor the rich cultural heritage and legacy of people of African descent and pay tribute to them and the community organization that contribute to the social, cultural, economic, and political life of Salina. And the citizens of Salinas have been in the forefront of efforts to establish a caring, compassionate society based on the inherent dignity of all its members by taking a leadership role aimed at eliminating all forms of discrimination and disadvantages, and by recognizing that a fundamental strength of our community is based on the diversity among us. Now, therefore, I, Aaron Householder, Mayor of the city of Salina, do hereby proclaim that month of February 2015 Black History Month and urge that every citizen of Salina join me in celebrating the diversity of character of our community and highlight the importance of sharing our cultural customs and traditions with those around us. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Salina, Kansas, by affix this day, February 9, 2015.
Great. What events do you have planned this month? I know you had a busy, we've been involved in several other events. Would you have some other events coming up?
Yes, alright. New Jerusalem Missionary Baptist Church, the church will have a Black History lesson during regular service each day for the month of February. On the last Sunday of the month, they will have a program entitled Teaching Tree Moments in Black History highlighting individuals from the 1800s to till the present. Allen Chapel African Methodist Episcopal Church will host a banquet on Saturday, February 21st, at the Carver Center, entitled Lifting Up Our Legacy, where legends of the past, present, and the future from the local African-American community will be recognized for their love and commitment to the church. The times will be 5:00 PM till 8:00 PM, the donation, $10 donations per adult and $5 per child. And then we have Salina Community Theater Presents Clyburn Park. This play borrows elements from the Lauren Hansberry play, "A Raisin in the Sun," when nervous communities leaders anxiously tried to stop the sale of the house to a black family in 1959. Clyburn Park by Bruce Norris also takes you to the same house set in President's Day as now predominantly African-American neighborhood battles to hold its ground in the face of The production at SCT opens on Friday, February 13, and the runs through Saturday, February 28. Following the matinee of the show on Sunday, February 15 and February 22, there'll be a panel discussion. Contact SCT for the ticket information.
Great. Thank you. I've got your signed copy up here.
Item 3.2, the week of February 22 through February 28, 2015 as Engineers Week in the city of Salina. Dan Stack, Vice President of the Smoky Valley Chapter of KSPE, will read the proclamation.
Mr. Stack.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Whereas George Washington, the first President of the United States and founding father of our nation, was a distinguished military and agricultural engineer as well as an excellent surveyor, and whereas engineers have used their scientific and technical knowledge and skills in creative and innovative ways to fulfill society's needs, and whereas engineers face the major technological challenges of our time, from rebuilding towns devastated by natural disasters to designing an information superhighway, and whereas engineers are encouraging our young math and science students to realize the practical power of their knowledge, and whereas we will look more than ever to engineers and their knowledge and skills to meet the challenges of the future, and whereas this year's theme for the event is Engineering New Horizons, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize engineers' countless accomplishments and contributions during the week we celebrate George Washington's birthday. Now, therefore, I, Aaron K. Householder, Mayor of the city of Salina, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the week of February 22 through February 28, 2015 as Engineers Week in the city of Salina. Dan Stack, Vice President of the Smoky Valley Chapter of KSPE, will read the proclamation.
Mr. Stack.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Whereas George Washington, the first President of the United States and founding father of our nation, was a distinguished military and agricultural engineer as well as an excellent surveyor, and whereas engineers have used their scientific and technical knowledge and skills in creative and innovative ways to fulfill society's needs, and whereas engineers face the major technological challenges of our time, from rebuilding towns devastated by natural disasters to designing an information superhighway, and whereas engineers are encouraging our young math and science students to realize the practical power of their knowledge, and whereas we will look more than ever to engineers and their knowledge and skills to meet the challenges of the future, and whereas this year's theme for the event is Engineering New Horizons, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize engineers' countless accomplishments and contributions during the week we celebrate George Washington's birthday. Now, therefore, I, Aaron K. Householder, Mayor of the city of Salina, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the week of February 22 through February 28, 2015 as Engineers Week in the city of Salina, and I urge all citizens to pay appropriate tribute to the engineers in our community for their contributions to our health, safety, and welfare. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Salina to be affixed this ninth day of February 2015. Aaron K. Householder, Mayor.
What events do you have planned?
I've had a few this month, and we started it with a Great Plains Future Cities Competition on January 24 in Manhattan. A lot of sixth, seventh, eighth graders from around the state compete in a, basically on computers, building three-dimensional tabletop models to scale. And Concordia Junior High, which is one of the junior highs in our chapter, placed third out of 63 teams. There also, this last Saturday, was a regional math competition held on February 7 at the KSU Salina campus. Around 50 mathletes or students from seven public and home schools participated. The statewide competition will be held March 7 in Topeka on the Washburn University Campus. And then the national competition is in Orlando, Florida on May 11. And then lastly, we have a Smoky Valley Chapter, which is our Professional Engineering Society Chapter in this area, has an annual Sweethearts and Awards Dinner on February 17, where we recognize the outstanding achievements of engineers around the area as well as teachers and citizenship and service to the community. That's the main things we have planned. And then I have some Engineers Week buttons for you all.
Okay.
So pass those out.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
Of course, I've got your signed copy here while you're up. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Item 3.3, presentation of valor awards to Salina police officers.
Chief Nelson.
Mayor, I strive to learn something every day, and I was not aware there's Engineers Week.
Yeah.
I want to thank Dan for that.
Yeah, yeah.
I want to thank everybody for being here. It does mean a lot to the officers that were involved. Certainly means a lot to the officers that are here, and it means a lot to me, too. Just shows a lot of support for your police department. We are here today for an award of our presentations for Master Police Officers Gary Hahnus, James Mike Miller, and Scott Hoagland. This award of ours is for acts of courage and outstanding performance under unusually difficult and life-threatening circumstances. This is how the incident is described on the VAWR certificate, which the mayor will be presenting shortly. On May 21, 2014, Master Police Officers Gary Hahnus, Scott Hoagland, and Mike Miller responded to the 700 block of Comanche in regards to a domestic disturbance in which the victim reported her boyfriend had pointed a rifle at her. As the officer spoke with the victim, the suspect was observed walking down the street carrying a rifle. The officers instructed the victim to run in the opposite direction of the suspect as he began firing several rounds at them. As the officer spoke, I'm sorry, the officers took cover and returned fire, striking the suspect. The suspect was taken into custody after being treated for non-life-threatening injuries. The actions of these officers saved the lives of citizens and their fellow officers. What we have here is a short video that will be shown shortly, hopefully. It's a minute and 45 seconds. It's not the entire incident, but it's towards the end of it, it's where Officer Hahnus, while he's being shot at, has the thought process to turn on his body camera. I don't know if I would have thought about that, but he turns it on, we capture part of it. It's amazing how fast this stuff happens, and I think this does a pretty good job of portraying what did occur that day.
Head over to the Friendship Center. State reference, an aggravated assault suspect who is intoxicated is still on him, locked in a little vault and weapon. Everything else is in the call, and we're trying to get someone from second shift out.
Put your hands behind your back! 8:22, send medics, we got one hit! 8:22, send medics, we got one hit! I got it, I got it. Everybody here okay? Feel the check? You good? You've been taking a lot of shots over there. Hey, dropped it just as I pulled up on it.
What you can't tell, there's upwards of 25 shots in our exchange there. 25 shots. I mean, that gives me the chills just watching that. What that video doesn't show, or what you can't tell by all that, I'd like to fill in a few of the gray areas. Detective Hoagland, he's since returned to Patrol Division, but at that time he was a detective. He responded on his own initiative. He wasn't dispatched to the call, he heard the call go out, and on his own initiative once again, he went to the scene. After all three officers were being shot at, they all immediately moved to cover and sought cover. That's incredibly important if you're, you know, not that anybody's been shot at, but the most important thing you can do is two things, move and take cover. That's just incredible training. That's what we all are trained to do, and it's awesome, that's what they did. Detective Hoagland went to the nearest tree, and it was a big tree, because he was a big man, but it was a big tree. The other two officers found a parked motor vehicle. That's what you see there towards the end, Officer Hahnus and Miller going towards that parked, I think it was a truck. The suspect had a rifle. I mean, that's pretty important, folks. If you're in a gun battle, you probably don't want to have a handgun when the bad guy has a rifle. But that's how it took place. Officer Hahnus actually tried to recover his rifle from the trunk of his car, but when you're getting shot at, that's kind of difficult. And actually, he hit his patrol vehicle as he was trying to get the gun out of the trunk. The suspect fired at least 10 rounds at the officers during this exchange. Detective Hoagland did return fire, and it was a distance of 31 yards. Now, if we think of 31 yards, you know, 93 feet, that's quite a distance to be shooting somebody with a handgun, and he was able to do it twice. That's phenomenal shooting. I attribute that to his training, I attribute that to his SWAT training, his dedication. Generally speaking, your SWAT cops tend to be your better shooters. I'm not saying this happened here, but it was still phenomenal shooting. Officer Hahnus and Miller were able to flank the suspect. You saw that happening there. Get behind cover, order him to the ground, which thankfully, he did drop the weapon because you don't have a whole lot of time to decide what you're going to do. It's literally split seconds. He did drop the weapon, probably because he was out of rounds, but, you know, we'll never know, it doesn't really matter, but I'm somewhat thankful he wasn't hurt. But regardless, I'm ecstatic the officers weren't hurt or the civilian. These three officers displayed incredible bravery during this incident, and as a result of their training experience, no innocent civilians were injured, nor were they. The suspect, whose name does not bear mentioning, was just recently sentenced to 82 years in prison after being convicted of three counts of attempted murder. Well done, Officer Hahnus, Hoagland, and Miller. Well done. I believe the mayor's going to give you a VAWR certificate here. I've got your, I can usually speak, is it on? Okay, great. I can usually speak loud enough, but we'll do this for the record there, so it's got it on here. I've got your awards. I, here we go, maybe let the chief pass them out, and I believe you, did you read this? You did, okay, yeah. And it's my honor to present each one of you with us, obviously, as you know, it's a little close to home, so, so I know we appreciate what you did, your restraint, and just the things I think that the citizens could see, your immediate attention to each other, to the citizens around you, as you, I mean, within seconds, I'll come across, within seconds of just being shot at, you're asking, how's each other? How's the, how was the lady that you were there to check on? The other citizens looking out, they fired off in this way, you know, you were looking out for your citizens, and I think that shows everybody in our community the dedication for each other, for the public, for all involved, and I couldn't be happier to be presenting you all with these awards today. I appreciate it. Again, everyone, if you would, please.
Chief, this also highlights the very dangerous aspect of domestic violence.
Very, very true. I'm just glad, you guys, I thought I paid all my parking tickets, I'm glad it was, I'm glad that it was this, so. If any of the other commissioners have anything, I mean, we so rarely get an opportunity to thank you all for the work you do, so I'm sure other commissioners may have comments as well, so.
One thing I was so impressed with is the use of technology. We were talking, we've heard about it, and I knew that we had purchased cameras for the officers on the street, but I didn't realize, this is when you realize how important the camera is in documenting the situation, so that there's a clear record of it afterwards. And it's touching, too, for us, of course, to see it now, and to see how important it is to have a professional force using the latest technology and to do the best job that they can, and made me proud that the camera was also part of the situation.
Well, I was actually initially complaining, wow, I can't see where he's going, then I realized, well, gosh, he's getting shot at, but doesn't have time to orient the camera there. But it's nice and see some nice young officers on the force, and I hope the neighborhood youth get a chance to meet you when things aren't as volatile as that, and so they, you know, you get to talk with them, and they get to talk with you, so they can grow up, you know, seeing you as their friend, not as someone to be afraid of sometimes. Police officers are characterized as someone you only go to see, like the assistant principal, you know, when there's trouble. But it's nice when they can walk up to you and call you by name and shake your hand, they become your allies in neighborhoods when you need to find stuff out, because they usually know what's going on. But congratulations to all three of you.
I'd just like to say thank you to all of you. I think what you demonstrated that day in very difficult circumstances was not only professionalism and bravery, but a lot of compassion as well. And you showed great restraint, you make all of us in this city proud. I think we have a lot to be proud of with you. And I have to say that I think with everybody else in here that are supporting you, I think that I'm happy for you guys that you all returned home safe. I'm happier for your families and your wives and children that you did as well, so, thanks again, and great job.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. We all appreciate you.
Fantastic. Great. Thank you very much. Well, that takes us to the Citizens Forum. This is an opportunity for anyone who has anything they'd like to bring before the City Commission today that is not on today's agenda. You can come before us and just give us your name and address, and then feel free to come up during other parts of the meeting where it may be pertinent to the items on the agenda, so. If there's anyone? Oh, sure.
Norman Mantle, with Pleasant Hill Road.
I see the city's spending more money on statues again. Why is that? We've got other places more important to put that money. You could use that money to help the law enforcement get the equipment and stuff they need so they can do their job. So I think you got your priorities in the wrong place.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else with anything they'd like to bring before the City Commission? Okay, if not, we'll go ahead and go on into the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of February 2, 2015. Item 6.2, Resolution Number 15-7175, appointing members to various boards and commissions. Item 6.3, award contract for the 2015 Microsurfacing Project Number 15-3062 to Vance Brothers Incorporated in the amount of $846,280.36 with a 5% construction contingency.
If there is an item on the, if there's not an item on the consent agenda, the Commissioner would like removed or amended, I would entertain a motion.
One minor correction on the Resolution Number 15-7175.
Okay.
Under Airport Authority, Troy Vansel appointed until 2/28, it should be 2/018.
Oh, okay, 2018, okay.
It says 218.
Going back in time.
His time is, oh, look at that, he's already making a difference, yeah. Okay, what was that, minor modification, I entertain a motion to approve, or?
Was that a motion?
No, I said it.
Was that a motion with the correction?
Oh, I did not. I just made a correction.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, move approval of the consent agenda.
With the correction?
With the correction.
Okay. Motion to second to approve the consent agenda as presented, except with the minor modification of 218 to 2018 on Troy Vansel's appointment. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0, and that should move us on to administration.
Item 7.1, second reading ordinance number 15-10765, amending Salina Code Section 35-37 pertaining to the notice and removal of obstructions and encroachments.
Ordinance number 15-10765 was passed on first reading on February 2, 2015. Since that time, no comments have been received. Is there anyone from the public here to discuss this matter? Okay, seeing none, I'd bring it back to the Commission for possible action.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve second, on second reading, ordinance number 15-10765, amending Salina Code Section 35-37 pertaining to the notice and removal of obstructions and encroachments.
Second. Motion to second to approve on second reading, ordinance number 15-10765, if the clerk would call the roll.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Aye.
Commissioner Crawford.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hardy.
Aye.
Mayor Householder.
Aye. That motion carries 5-0.
Item 7.2, authorize the purchase of two automatic license plate reader recognition mobile systems for the Salina Police Department.
Chief Nelson.
The presentation is for ALPRs, which are license plate readers. They've been around for over a decade, they've been around for quite a long time. I say that to tell you it's not something brand new. It's technology, I'm sure you read the blue sheet, hopefully it made sense to you, and obviously I'll entertain any questions you have. But basically, it's just technology, force multiplier, it does things that the officers are already doing on a daily basis, it just does it faster, that's just the bottom line, it does it automatically. It's, I came from a town, I guess most of you know in Missouri, but they had LPRs, and I was, I had a part in getting those there, and I can tell you, they do some phenomenal police work. I mean, it just, it just does. It's reading license plates that we can read anyway, in parking lots, on the streets as we drive by them. We can, we can call joint communications, or we can type them in our MDTs, not when we're driving, but it does the same thing automatically. So that's why we like it, it's just technology. The latest data I have from Columbia as far as 2013, I won't bore you with too many numbers, but I'll just say, as a result of their LPRs, and in the county, it's a city-county cooperation, which is what we're doing here, too, they had 73 felony arrests in 2013, they had 147 total arrests, they recovered 37 stolen vehicles, and they recovered 37 license plates. In addition, property recovered was in excess of $360,000. I'm not guaranteed that can happen here, I'm just telling you that's a result of LPRs. I guarantee it'll find stolen cars, I guarantee it'll find stolen plates, and it'll find wanted people, guaranteed. It can't. So that's what it is. It's not any massive, brand-new technology that hasn't been already vetted, it's been vetted for years, and that's what I'd like to bring to Columbia, I'm sorry, to Salina. Sorry, it's already there.
Yeah, it's already there.
Is this something that's just mounted on the front of the?
Yes, sir. It's cameras, it's cameras that just, as you drive by, you could literally be going down an interstate, they say 80-some miles an hour, still going to read them. But generally, what we use before in town is you drive, as you're driving, if it's on, it's capturing every plate that goes by you, and if you're in parking lots, it captures every plate as you drive by. If you went through Walmart, it would capture every plate, when I say every, if the plate's dirty, there's things that it can't pick up, but basically, it tries to capture every single plate it drives by, and then it runs against the Kansas Wanted files and the NCIC files, and if it gets a hit, or if it gets where that plate's wanted, it automatically does this alarm that tells the officer, you just went by something interesting.
So you just decide ahead of time where you're going to patrol, goodness, you only went two units?
We only had two, you know, two units, that's why I requested today. But that's because they're not cheap, technology is not cheap. But basically, it's a four-year warranty, so we're going to have them for four years if you approve, and we'll assess it after four years, and if it's worth continuing, because basically, once the warranty goes out, a lot of departments use it until they don't work anymore, and then just buy another one. But we'll assess it on a yearly basis, I'll be glad to provide you the information on a yearly basis, what comes out of this.
Okay. That was one of my questions was on getting an annual-type update, because I did, I was looking through this, and I had a number of questions, and, you know, you had mentioned that this thing had been around for 10 years, been vetted in other communities. Have there been in other communities, one of the first things that struck me was that, have there been any challenges to some of these in any communities that you're aware of for Fourth Amendment?
There has been none successfully. I mean, the ACLU's not that proud of it, but I can just say, well, I won't go down that route, but I can say there's not been any successfully where they brought up issues with it. The number-one issues are what you do with the storage and how long you store it. That'll all be covered in policy, it's not like you do this without a policy, and there are so many model policies out there, including where I came from, I've already, kind of already done that, so that's not really an issue, so there definitely will be a policy saying exactly who can look at this stuff, how long it's stored, and the safety of the information, obviously, too.
And, because those were exactly my questions, is who we're going to share the, who that gets shared with, how long we're going to store it, and then if we've got, obviously, you'd have to maintain and have a custodial chain.
Sure.
For, if there's a court record involved, but what about if it's just, it reads somebody's and it's an innocent party, how long?
Well, what I can say, what I can say to that is, this is considered investigative tool, so it doesn't automatically not become investigative tool the second the plate drives by, if that makes sense. If you drive by the plate and it doesn't get a hit, it doesn't mean three months later you're going to be looking for that plate, and you run it, and all of a sudden, bam, there it is, it was in our community on this date. So that part's a little bit sketchy as far as how long you keep this, but the standard is up, you know, upwards of a year is a standard that's accepted, but there are some cities, it really depends on what the community allows. There's some cities where it might be one day, you know, one hour, which if it's that way, I don't even know why we're collecting it, because it won't do us any good in the future. It's been very good for Amber Alerts, it really has, if you get the plate in, a lot of your bigger cities are putting them up on the overpasses, and they're capturing, especially on Amber Alerts and the Silver Alerts, I think is one, I think we know what that is, it's been very successful in that. One thing I can say about the actual storage of the data is, I've done this for 31 years, and for 31 years, we've been given license plate numbers to the state, to your DOR, to KBI, now here, to KBI, but the KBI's been collecting that for decades. The federal government and the NCI checks been collecting that for decades. I mean, this is, again, this is something, it's not new, it's just being pushed down all the way to the municipal level.
Right. And, you know, I'll just mention that in reading literature on kind of both sides of these, and I think you've hit pretty well on pretty much all of them, I think the main concern on, from the privacy aspect is, is that concern that if these things are being stored, and you're, in essence, literally able to track people's movements. And so if things are stored over a certain point in time, I think that was the main concern on any sort of tracking type.
Sure, and if I-
Sure, and if I, well, I'm sure you want me to respond to that, people do get a little confused, and I'm not saying you, sir, but I'm saying GPS does track live movement where you're going, this does not track, it tracks where you were that minute, if you wanna use the word "track."
But you could put A and B together, and?
Yes, but GPS is truly a tracking device, this is taking one snippet where you were for one second in time, now, if you drive by it 35 times, I guess you're tracking it, but I'm, there has been instances where people try to say it's the same as GPS, and it is not, it's two completely different things.
Commissioner, real quick on the record stuff, too, it doesn't, if you, if you think about it, there's a lot of ways to get information, you can take a notepad with you, and, you know, fill out a form and write it down, you can enter it into a laptop, you can use a camera, you can do, there's lots of ways, it doesn't really matter how you get it, when we think about the record aspect, it does, the, how you get it is not really relevant, what's relevant is, how do you classify that piece of information, and so what we do is, in creation of a policy, we'll look at the Kansas Open Records Act, look at that information, how it fits, what the guidelines are, and what it tells us as far as handling, and so when we formalize that policy, obviously Greg looks at that, and he'll look at that and say, okay, this is in line with the Kansas Open Records Act, so we'll do that, just like with any record type that we would have from any source.
And actually, I, Commissioner Blanchard, I want to say, I actually anticipated that question, I love this line, "LPRs do not track, they capture momentary in random," that's the key, "random license plate data." LP, or GPS is a specific vehicle that you are targeting, this is random plates we just run across.
Yeah, and I meant "track" more the generic term of saying, it takes a snapshot of, you're here at this point, and?
Yes.
How long, I mean, if you don't, if you don't have warrants and stuff, I know some communities that I read, keep it for 48 hours on innocence, and then, and then kind of watch, I don't know if that's because of storage concerns, or?
I would say that, we all know, when they have a very positive, very media-friendly incident, such as the, well, not media-friendly, but when the guy was shooting on the interstate last year in Kansas City, LPR is what caught the guy, and some of the information they had stored was six, seven months old, that had they dumped it after 48 hours, it wouldn't have mattered, if that, if that makes sense, they were able to put this guy in the area of where these were happening by checking the Kansas City Metro Area's LPR data, so that's probably, I'm not saying this for another day, but that is definitely gonna be part of the policy, it's definitely gonna coincide with the Kansas Open Records.
And are we gonna, are we gonna see the policy, and, I mean, is the policy gonna be made part of the, part of our?
It can be if you'd like, generally speaking, that would be an administrative-type task that we would take on, just looking at it from a mostly legal perspective, to make sure we're in line with the Kansas Open Records Act, it's up to you, if you believe as a commissioner, you'd like to see that policy. I will say, I think from our perspective, there's, and speaking with Brad, there's no reason to keep records any longer than we have to, it costs more, you have storage issues, you have just handling aspects, and so I don't, I don't think there's gonna be an intent to hold stuff any longer than necessary at all, 'cause if you don't find information that leads you to a police action, there's really not any reason to hold on to it.
And then one last thing, just getting all the questions out, 'cause I'm sure a lot of people have comments and questions about it when they read about it, and in today's age, people are concerned about Big Brother, so not, not my concerns, but I just feel like the more we talk about this, and get some of this information out, the better. As far as, we're doing two now, do you anticipate this being expanded to more cars and/or pole mounts?
It's two, plus I believe the sheriff, that was part of the goals, that we, the strategic goals, I talked to the sheriff about this, and he's very interested in it also, it probably won't be exactly at the same time when, when this goes out, but they definitely plan to do it two, so that, by one, so that'd be three. As far as long-term goals, for a city this size, and with my experience, two is probably adequate for, for the city of Salina, however, what you said about the fixed, the pole-mounted, boy, if you put one up on, on, you know, I-70, 135, it's amazing, thousands and thousands you'd be capturing plates, and catching a lot of stuff, either going through our city or getting off at one of our exits, but long-term goal, to answer your question, sir, I would love to have some mounted fixed, they're on overpasses, they have to have a power source, but yeah, that'd be my long-term goal.
How do you determine where you're gonna cruise?
Well, we have, we have six beats, and my thought process would be one and six, so we kind of, one at the top, beat one at the top, six at the bottom, but they're not specifically tied where they have to stay in this, you know, beat, the cars that we put the cameras on will be, not that we don't have all high-speed officers, but they'll be the high three that showed, have showed in the past that they like doing this kind of stuff, as far as proactive, I don't like the word aggressive, but proactive police work, where they know what to do if there's a bad guy, and, you know, I'm excited about that, when I was younger, I would have liked to have been that guy, but anyway, we're just gonna try to cover the city the best we can.
What's the turnaround time for the time the camera sees the license?
It's literally as much, as instantaneous I can say, instantaneous, I mean, I've, it's simply amazing, you drive by, and the company I talked about, their LSAG, they came up, and they have a actual car that looks like a police car, I don't quite know how they get away with it, but it doesn't say "police" on it, but it has all the stuff on it, the cameras, the light bar, because they're trying to sell you light bars, too, but anyway, we drove around with them, and we got some hits, and it's literally instantaneously, as you drive by, we had a couple of hits, and these were for people that are registered as sex offenders, which, that's important to know if it's near school, you know, that's important to know, there's instances where that would be important to know, and it would definitely be useful in that instance if we're capturing where these folks are, if they're where they're not, if they're where they're not supposed to be.
Been no challenges for legality of pulling over a person for search, if you wouldn't have otherwise had a reason to pull them over?
For that question, no, but to be clear, just because the instrument says "bing," you don't automatically turn your lights and start chasing them, you call, you call the dispatcher, you confirm the plate that this just read, if you have time, which most of the time you will, and then the dispatcher will say, yes, that is, that is a stolen car, so it's confirmed by a human, so it's kind of checks and balances, the dispatcher tells you that plate that that LPR is reading is in fact the same plate that's wanted and stolen, or such, so it's not instantaneously, when you see it, you turn on the lights, you still have checks and balances in place.
Are there just certain types of, well, for lack of a better term, warrants or offenses that you would?
You can set the parameters, I didn't mean to apologize, I'm sorry.
No, no, you, well, no, you understood the question.
You can set the parameters any way you want to, if you want to set it as low as folks who owe the city of Salina money because of unpaid parking tickets, I don't know if we have enough cops to do that, but, but we literally could do that, we could, we could open up that window for a week, and just for a week, having these cars drive around looking for folks who have plates entered that owe the city of Salina back parking tickets, I mean, that can be done, or you close it up where you just want felony warrants, you know, you just want misdemeanor warrants, you just want sex warrants, it's whatever sex offense warrant, it's whatever you want it set the parameters to be.
So, so just logistically, if you do get a ding on something like that, like it's a, let's just use a parking ticket, you get a ding on that, you pull someone over, what does that conversation look like, is it, I pulled you over because we gotta, because you didn't pay your parking ticket?
It's, it's not a secret that we have LPR, 'cause we're trying to be as transparent as we can be, what the conversation's gonna be is, sir, ma'am, we pulled you over because the car, the owner registered to this car has $285 of unpaid parking tickets, is that you, you know, well, it'll tell you if it's you or not, but if it's you, then we gotta get this taken care of, but there's nothing wrong, not, that's if there's a, it has to be in the warrant, of cour, in the computer, it has to be in the computer, as you having unpaid parking tickets.
Right.
And again, if you have one $5 unpaid parking ticket, I don't think anybody's gonna take the time to put that in the computer, at least I hope not, but, because we have better things to do, too, but, I mean, it's for, that's as low as we could go, that was, maybe that wasn't a very good example, but I mean?
Well, no, I just wanted to use the lowest probably?
Sure.
Thing that you might be able to think of. What, probably, the only other question I have on here, and hopefully it's the easiest one, is, we're looking at a four-year maintenance agreement, along with the equipment and the training, what is the life cycle, life expectation of these units, and, and do they require much maintenance at all?
Well, not during the, from what we've heard from other people that own LSAG, LPRs, no, and they literally are letting them run as long as they run, but I couldn't put a time on it, but it's not like at four years, all of a sudden they just break, what happens at four years is they no longer will, will cover them as far as warranty goes.
And what about software upgrades?
That's part of the four-year, it's one-year standard, and this, that price includes a three-year extended warranty, so it's, that does include the upgrades.
So it's not, it's not like a thousand for the cameras and 24,000 for the software?
No, and they don't like, LSAG does not like the word "maintenance," even, they don't like using that word, it's a warranty, so, even though it's the same thing, but they, they don't use the word "maintenance," it's all covered under the warranty for four years. Okay.
One general question, if I can, just because these are, the funds are coming from drug seizure?
Correct.
Money?
Forfeiture, yes.
And forfeitures, and, just, just kind of, just as quick as you can, what are other things that these, that these funds are good for, obviously, the forfeiture funds aren't good for paying any sort of salaries or anything?
Correct.
What are, what are some of the things, are we able to take some of these mon, I mean, are we having to use these as they come available, or can we bank some of these somehow?
I'm not sure if it's two or three years, but there's a period where you have to have the money spent, or explain to the government why you didn't spend it, ours is July 23rd of this year, that's when we have to have the entire amount that was left by Chief Hill to us spent, and we'll do that, but there's very specific guidelines to what you can and can't buy, so no, and definitely one of them is you can't be buying, you can't be paying for salaries?
Okay.
Overtime, it cannot.
I mean, this didn't come in and say, we have this forfeiture money if you want to buy these, they said, we had this and we made the decision.
We get it aside, you get it aside what you allow me to purchase, since I've been here, we've purchased the two supervisors' cars, the two Ford Explorers, we purchased those, we purchased?
25 cameras?
We purchased 25 body cameras, now, I think that's, that's a perfect use for forfeiture fund, that was $100,000 for these 25 body cams, we've purchased gym equipment, as long as a gym is inside your police facility, being used by law enforcement officials, we can do that, we bought quite a bit of gym equipment, new gym equipment, but there are specific, to answer your question, which I hope I'm doing successfully, very specific guidelines what you can and can't buy, it's not, it's not what, just what I want, or, you know, or even what you want, sir, it's what the federal government allows you to buy, by the criteria that's already in place.
Okay. Commissioners, the, when you look at the cost, and this is an opportunity to really, as Chief mentioned, to try this out and really analyze the results, what are the types, when you look at the volumes of the types of situations with warrants, or fugitives, or those categories, that's what you're after, those types of things, how effective are we with this technology? And he's had some experience, and we'll see how effective we are here, but as you see it, $53,000, I don't know if that's a five, six-year life, whatever it is, maybe arbitrarily put about an $8,000 to $10,000 cost per year for two of them, that's not inexpensive, and you can't use the forfeiture dollars to replace those later, so that's why we want to get good information, and, I mean, obviously, we're a few years out, so whether it's you or others in your seat, will be determined way out that far, but it makes sense to look at this pretty closely, because that would become a fairly expensive operating budget item in the future, so we want to make sure that we get the bank for a buck, and I think the experience that Chief has is helpful, knowing that, and then our experience added to that, we'll, we'll have a good idea in year four or five, we'll be able to see that, we'll know before then, but we'll certainly know by the time we need to replace them.
Great, any more questions for the chief?
Just another forfeiture fund question, I was wondering, is that a fairly constant resource, flow of income?
After this, it'll be depleted.
But generally speaking, over time, or does it just come in spurts?
Well, my historical knowledge only goes back a year, but I mean, a few years ago, they seized a very large amount, and that's why it was all there when I got here, but it's hit or miss, I don't know if I, I don't know if I have answered that, I mean, forfeiture is what basically runs DTF, the Drug Task Force, forfeiture funds and such, does that answer your question?
And it's local money, or forfeiture money that's found locally, or results from local operations?
Yes.
It's not a pot that everybody divides up then?
No, it has to be activities that the Salina Police Department, and to include the DTF, were actively involved in, which resulted in this property being seized under the federal and state guidelines.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Anyone from the public care to comment on this issue? Okay, seeing none, I'd bring it back to the commission for possible action.
Mr. Mayor, move for authorization to purchase two automatic license plate reader recognition mobile systems for the Salina Police Department.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the authorized purchase of the two automatic license plate reader recognition ALPR mobile systems from LSAG North America, in the amount of, I think it's $53,330, is that correct?
Yes.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0, thank you.
Item 7.3, authorize the purchase of 49 golf carts, six utility carts, and one utility driving range picker cart for the Salina Municipal Golf Course.
Dion.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, give you a little bit of background on the process and where we're at, after the Vehicles and Equipment Sub-CIP was approved, we went through the process of looking at the different options that we might have for replacing our fleet and/or maintaining the existing fleet. As it exists today, we have 43 2005 Easy Go electric models, and we have six 2001 Club Car electric carts for, excuse me, for the golf operation side. On the maintenance side, we have utility carts, basically that range in age from 15 to 18 years old, and our golf carts are 10 to 14 years of age, so as we went through the process here, we looked at, what if we just replaced the batteries, which we have replaced the batteries three times now in our electric carts. Unfortunately, as we researched that, it just wasn't in the carts due to the age of the fleet. Generally, you're gonna speak, generally speaking, carts are gonna, six to eight years would probably be about the target you would get, and that would vary based upon electric or gas to a degree as well. So after that, we brought in some different carts to look at, where we tested from different manufacturers, different makes, electric, gas, we did some very extensive tests, Mark Lidle, the golf course superintendent out there, we were measuring fuel consumption, we were utilizing it in different ways, we were measuring energy units that the electrics will use, part of that, on an electric cart, you get X number of units of warranty, so we need to know how much, how many units of energy it uses each time it goes out, and then we can apply what our average rounds are for those carts and get an idea of how our warranty might last. Anyways, we went through this process and looked at all the different things, it brought us to basically the conclusion that, number one, we needed a new fleet of carts, number two, we believe that the fuel-injected gas carts are the best bang for our buck long-term. So as we went through those things, some of the things that would be worth notating, we do believe that over the course of time, if you used a six-year life expectancy, that the electric carts would have $20,000 less value than the gas carts, or the fuel-injected carts, and we believe that's conservative. Second piece, two, the warranty on the electric carts would roughly be based upon usage we've had in the past two and a half years, whereas the gas one would be four years, so again, looking at it from that point. We solicited bids in early February, we had two companies respond, one representing Yamaha, one representing Club Car, we've broken down the different bids for you there, but it was pretty self-explanatory when we looked at it and penciled it out, that we believe that the Yamaha package for both the golf carts, utility carts, and the picker is the best option for us, if that's the way you would choose to allow us to go. We also looked at several little adds to those as well, in terms of just beverage coolers, those are, again, opportunities for us to move more food and beverage product, hour meters, which allow us to help maintain the carts better just from a maintenance standpoint, knowing how many hours are on it when we need to service them, et cetera, sand bottles, again, help maintain the course anytime you're taking divots, again, sanding the, those help maintain the condition of the course, and then winter covers, we have a lot of our members who like to play over the winter, this would give us 10 of those covers, we could put on those carts as part of the platinum package that they do, and would extend the season a little bit there as well, so we've requested 10 of those. Fiscal note, this is a 50-50 split, if you will, is how the funds are divided up, we have half of it coming from the Vehicles and Equipment Sub-CIP and the General Fund, and half coming from the Park CIP Fund and Alcohol Tax. In terms of recommendation, we would, we've presented three options for you, the first option is for 49 electronic fuel-injected carts, six utility carts, and one range picker for 222-775, and then with the, all the adds and everything else, the total would be 231-664, you could reject and rebid the project at a later date, or provide a different option or direction to us, and with that, I'd stand for questions.
Okay, any questions for staff?
Did the golf course make any money this year?
It did.
How much?
I think right now, our fund balance is right at $112,000, so it may just a shade over 55, 60 in that range, we're still finalizing the numbers, we have definitely stabilized the last three years, target fund balance is $100,000 is what we have in the, that's our goal, I do believe that's too low, I think that number needs to be a little bit higher, probably double that, to have the flexibility that we need and to have, so if we did run on tough times again in the future, we would have a balance there to be able to sustain to be able to sustain that a little bit better. But yes, it did.
How much gas does a cart consume over a round?
I'm going to bring Mark up for that, because he did the exact test, and I think he has it down to the ounces.
Depends on how bad of a golfer you are. If you're like me, where you're pretty much just out there driving around, yeah.
How much did you drive through the rough looking for your ball?
Yeah, right, yeah, right.
Mayor, Commissioners, we, the testing I did a couple of ways. I tested the individual vehicles that were new. We ran, basically, we simulated five rounds. We put fertilizer sacks to replicate bags and passengers on the carts. The Yamaha cart was obviously the most fuel-efficient, because it is a fuel-injected cart, new technology. This technology is 10 years old to Yamaha, to the golf industry, it's only about two to three years, but it's been proven so far. Yamaha is used between 14 and 16 ounces per 18 holes. The Club Car is used about 22 to 24 ounces per 18 holes. And then the Easy Go cart, which was not a fuel-injected cart, their older-style engine used about 32 to 36 ounces of fuel. Their newer-style engine that they're implementing this year still was in the 28 to 32 ounces per 18 holes range. And I also took some individuals, I have three individuals who own golf carts. They own a Club Car, one owns a Yamaha, one owns an Easy Go. They're all three gas engines, all three carbureted gas engines. And I also did some fuel consumptions just with the average player. I fueled their tank up, I used a measuring cup, I let them play five rounds of golf, and then I refueled their carts again and measured it, and come up with some statistics there, so.
How about in terms of noise?
The newest technology, I'll tell you, it's not like your dead '64 Chevy, okay? The noise is, they've done a lot with the deafening with insulation around the mufflers on them. They're a lot quieter than, yeah, what you're used to with gas golf carts in the past. And the other thing with the fuel-injected carts, if you're familiar with running a gas golf cart on a golf course, traditionally, you have a choke, and you have to pull a choke in the morning. You may have to pull a choke after lunch if the engine's cold. With fuel-injected carts, I parked the cart outside in 17-degree weather for all day, brought it back inside, and it started immediately in the cold weather. Also, I made a couple of phone calls. One was to a course up in Montana who uses this cart in cold weather, obviously, quite a bit of the year. And their results were the same. They were amazed how well they operated and started on a regular basis. Now, as far as the difference between a gas and electric, obviously, there's going to be some noise with a gas golf cart. But the thing that we also looked at was the overall operational expense of the carts over the long term for us. And not only, the figure of $20,000 Deion gave you basically didn't include the reset value of the carts either. It's pretty significant when you come right down to a gas over electric right now because of the cost of the batteries.
How about the maintenance side of it? Is there greater maintenance with a gas-operated?
Well, I'll tell you, it's the same thing that I compare, you know, to a new vehicle to a 20-year-old car now. Part of the thing, part of the focus we looked at, too, was that the engine and the unit that we are choosing has an oil filter, so we eliminate that expense. Also, it has a more efficient operating clutch system, a better clutch system, and has a better transaxial system. They're just, they're just far more efficient and a lot better engineered. I spoke with a golf course up in Nebraska who is using still a, it's a little older model of Yamaha, but they're getting a full eight years out, and they're getting ready to buy carts, and they're going to buy the fuel-injected Yamaha also.
I've got a quick question for you while you're up here. On the equipment, we're going from Easy Go carts and the Club Cars that are all-electric. If we're going to a fuel-based cart now, do we have all the necessary tools that we're going to need to do to have maintenance on these, and the experience, and is there training involved in the purchase of these? What are some of those things that we know we're up to speed and?
As far as the training, yeah. The manufacturers all offer training on a regular basis, yearly basis. In fact, part of what my decision process was, I went to a Yamaha training school last year, and I sat in the back of the room just to listen to problems that their different vendors had maybe potentially had with their units. And I did this also with a Club Car meeting also. Easy Go did not have one. But, yeah, they offer training for that. They also, Yamaha also sends someone around every year for the next four years, and does a complete inspection on the golf cart. And if there are any warranty issues that maybe are going to be about to take place, they correct that before it happens. And then also, the fuel tanks, we currently only have 300-gallon fuel tanks. Our fuel supplier is supplying us with 1,000-gallon, we're going to upgrade our fuel system. They're going to supply us with 1,000-gallon, double-walled fuel tanks for no cost whatsoever.
Get a good lock on that.
This will actually help us secure our fuel tanks better than what we have currently.
Any other questions?
Just, so noise and pollution from the engines, shouldn't that be, or is that going to be a concern? To people neighboring?
With the fuel-injected engine, that's one of their selling points, is their carbon footprint on the new fuel-injecting units, both with Club Car and with Yamaha. I don't have any of those statistics there. I can, we can get them for you, but they're, you know, that was part of why they're going to the fuel-injected systems, to reduce the carbon emissions on the carts. And yes, also with the fuel-injected system, there is actually some noise reduction into that style of engine.
Take it there are no solar-powered golf carts available yet, but?
Yes, there are.
There are, really? Sure. We have enough sun here to? Now, I'm assuming their fees charged to rent these?
Yes. Don't go anywhere, just, yeah, I may have one for you.
Are those fees at all used to offset the cost of this purchase?
Well, we build our fees each year, our packages each year, and we kind of, basically, when we go through that, we're looking at usage, we're looking at what worked, what didn't, tweaking those things per the pricing policy that we're currently under. What we've done, and Steve, correct me if I'm wrong here, I think we went up a dollar per cart, basically per rental. So, and we have in the neighborhood in cart rentals, 13, $14,000 rounds, cart rounds per year, so you could do the math on that. We, again, in theory, if we did the same, roughly $13, $14,000 differential. The other thing I might add, you asked about the noise and the emissions. I think Mark talked about the emissions, but one of the pieces we also did, we reached out to our user base, and we let them drive the different carts that we had to get a feel for, is it too noisy? Is it too loud? Is it something that, you know, people would not like? And for the most part, the response was very good. So we tried to engage some of our user groups, or, excuse me, players as well, to get some feedback from them.
Great. And then the only thing I had for you was, I just wanted to point out, when we talk about the professionalism of city employees, and I think it's a good testament to our city manager and how well staff is, you're up here talking to us about golf carts, and you're talking about carbon footprints. We put fertilizer bags in here to test it. We drove these things out here. I mean, that's the, I mean, who does that? That's awesome. I mean, the thorough testing that you did to come up with these numbers, it just was like, if people don't think our guys are doing their jobs and taking their job seriously, I mean, we, most communities probably look at this thing and go, "Golf carts, we heard what they had to say, it came down to the price, and we just said, 'It's great,' and we went with it." And you're giving us stuff like, I mean, I just felt like we were like, I mean, just the level of professionalism was like, I wanted to just commend you on, I don't know if it was whose idea it was, if it was all y'all ideas, and so let's put, if this is typical operating procedure, to throw a bunch of sandbags and stuff, and let you guys play a few rounds of golf to get golf things or not, maybe it is. I'm not a golfer, so I don't know if that's standard procedure, but I'm pretty impressed. It's pretty cool. So appreciate you taking all the time for the details.
I would say, when you look at it with Steve, our golf pro and manager of the function, and our assistant golf pro and Mark out in the field, I would put our team against anybody. And one example of that is, is not just the preparation here, but you, the question was asked, did we break even last year operationally? There are very, very few municipal golf courses today that break even operationally. And so to even be close to that is really up in the excellent range, but we actually, with really good management, with professional people, are able to do that for the most part, most years. Now, if you get, you know, a really bad winter, wet summer, that kind of thing, you're not going to break even that year, but generally speaking, we do. You're never going to be able to create enough margin from that to purchase your capital needs, your carts, and maybe if you had a major project, but they get all their maintenance out of that, their staffing, everything. It's, they do an excellent job.
Yeah.
Well, the reason I asked that question is because I remember back, a few years ago, when we were really worrying about the golf course, so.
Yeah.
It's really nice that.
I think another thing to think about, though, is, you know, in addition to, well, are you breaking even, which is its own conversation, but in my mind, even more important is the utilization of the golf course. How many rounds are being played, and are those rounds increasing from year to year? Because that's basically what we're in business to do, is provide service for the citizens, and if citizens are taking advantage of it, that's, that's pretty important.
I believe three, three years ago, I believe we were at 28,000 rounds, Steve, is that right? And last year, we just did a tick over 40,000.
Wow, yeah.
I got a, I got a question about, because we don't, we didn't see the bid document here, in here, but there was an item in here about the trade-in.
Yes.
On some of these. Were we able to repurpose some of those in other departments, or did we have to trade the entire lot of everything we have for?
They came out and actually looked at our fleet to come up with the number, so pretty much the fleet as it exists, as it exists when the carts come in, provide you authorize the purchases, what they're getting.
So we're swapping out the whole fleet for fleet, and so, okay.
Yeah. And we thought about that, because it's a great thing if you took some of our better ones with, maybe some of ones in another area that weren't quite as good. But they did look at our fleet as it existed, and I think one of the, I think we got 31,000, if I recall correctly, was what the bid from Yamaha or Masek was on them, so, for the entire fleet.
And just, so this is money that's actually being used as an investment in the golf course, but with no anticipation of any return? So it's about a $35,000, $40,000 a year.
That's correct.
Subsidy, for lack of a better term.
Yeah, that's correct. And, because like I mentioned, if you can, if you can break even operationally, you're doing a very, very good job, but you shouldn't expect with your municipal golf course to be able to do that and to fully fund your capital need to golf carts and major projects on the course. You just usually are not in a position to do that. So, but to answer your question, you would not expect a return back on that.
And the money that's being requested today is coming from two different funds?
Right.
If I'm reading this correctly?
Yeah. If you look at the fiscal note, it talks about split equally between the parks CIP funds, it's a special alcohol tax, where the state provides that alcohol tax. It's, there's a distribution formula that goes to cities, and it's divided up three ways. A third goes for park needs, a third goes for general fund needs, and a third goes for local community programs that we're required to administer, work with them for grants to, for those, for the treatment. And so that's the one place that it comes from, and the other is out of the general fund-supported Vehicles and Equipment line item. We typically see cars and pickups.
The alcohol tax portion is money that really couldn't be used for the general fund anyway.
Correct.
So to speak, I mean, it's designated for certain areas.
It is designated. Your general fund is so broad, you could purchase things similar to what you would find in that fund and vice versa, but it is very much designated for park-type things. And it doesn't have to be in a golf course, it can be in other, you could see playgrounds and other things. But in this case, I think it was a smart move to look at that and say, "Let's see if we can pull some of those funds over and help purchase our golf carts."
And for lack of a better answer, I'd ask this question. Is the money available, the other portion, the general fund, for this purpose?
Yeah, it's budgeted. There's no reason the fund is not available. Or, quite honestly, our biggest challenges as we get into the future are bigger questions, you know, the future capital needs, staff salaries, programmatic emphasis that you may have as a commission, things like that. But as far as the budget being set and the funds being available, the answer is yes.
So that money was budgeted not specifically for any particular vehicle and equipment, but vehicles and equipment in general?
Well, what, what happens is, and I can't remember, Commissioner, when you came on board, but each year, the commissioners approve a list of vehicles and equipment. We call it a subcapital improvement plan. We have vehicles and equipment, streets, sidewalks, and other categories. And so you would find a lot of them that specifically outline golf carts in that sub-plan. Yeah. So it's not, in essence, taking away from anything else, although all items compete. It was, there were dollars designated specifically for this purpose. Thank you.
Well, hopefully, these golf carts will encourage more holes and wands, so we could sell more at the concession stand to fun things.
That would probably bring more people out.
Right, I think it'll make people golf better.
I'd take one.
There you go.
Any other questions for staff? All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. And thanks for the kind words. Thank you.
Oh, I mean, I appreciate it. Thank you for the work. Anyone from the audience care to comment on this? You're not going to tell us to turn the old ones into police vehicles, are you? Or artwork?
Norman Mantle, Pleasant Hill Road. I don't golf either, but I question the practicality of that 1,000-gallon tank, the hazardous requirements you're going to have to meet versus small tanks. Will you have to bury it underground? Can you locate that smaller tanks in a different area? Because if you get over 100-gallon, you're going to be meeting all kinds of EPA requirements.
We currently follow all of the State Fire Marshal's codes with our bunkering and everything we would do with our fuel tanks now. And actually, because these are double-walled fuel tanks, the requirements are not as stringent as what they are with the 300-gallon above-ground tanks that we currently have. So we're actually improving our hazardous risks with the fuel tanks.
Great, thank you.
Is the cost of the larger tank included?
They, they, part of the package. Okay. Great. Cool. Okay. Glad we know I put sirens on them, so, okay. Anyone else? Okay, I'll bring it back to the Commission for Possible Action.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we award the bid for the purchase of 49 electronic fuel-injected golf, gas golf carts, six utility carts and one range picker, in the amount of $222,775 after trade-in to the Masek Golf Car Company. In addition, purchase 49 beverage coolers, 49 hour meters, 98 sand bottles, and 10 winter covers from the optional specifications, in the amount of $8,889 from the Yamaha Golf Cart Company, for a total of $231,664.
Second.
Motion is second to authorize the purchase of 49 golf cars, six utility carts, one utility driving range picker cart as part of the approved Vehicles and Equipment SubCIP. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That motion carries 5-0. Thank you.
Item 7.4, Resolution Number 15-7176, authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement with Union Pacific Railroad to perform at-grade public road crossing improvements on East Crawford Street.
Mr. Stack.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is our annual SubCIP item for our railroad crossings. We have around a little over 70 in town. Some of those are three tracks at one crossing, and one track at one crossing, so we, it's hard, we have quite a few crossings in this, in this town. Last year, we actually repaired 14, so that was a good year, only two of which we had to pay for, so it was a really good year as far as that goes. North Knight Street was improved, everybody knows about that one, and Santa Fe. Santa Fe was one that was an emergency on the part of the railroad, and they wanted us to pay for it, of course, but basically, can only fund so much per year. We said, "We have to wait on that one." Well, they went ahead and improved it anyway, which really helped us a lot, because they were basically, they footed the bill for the concrete panels. Now, granted, they didn't use all brand-new, pristine concrete panels, but they've made it a lot better. So North Santa Fe is much better than it used to be. North Knight Street is, is all new panels. And then as far as the Western Line, 12th Street and Crawford, and all, all along the west side of town, along Broadway, and out towards Cloud Street, towards, towards the airport, basically, those were improved last year as well. So just wanted to give you an update on, our railroad crossings have gotten better. They had some funding to do those, to do that line, so, a lot for, and then also, last year was a Fourth and Iron. That was another one that we approved last year. So this next one that we're proposing is Crawford at Four, near Fourth Street. That is one we've had some trouble with in the past. The panels are pretty old, they're still holding up, but they, they tend to have metal, they have, they're metal around concrete, and the concrete's falling apart, and then the concrete's falling apart, and then the metal starts, you know, flying up, and we have to either go cut it off or have the railroad come in and do something, so anyway, it's one that we've struggled with for a few years, and so we felt like it, it takes 17,000 cars a day, so it's, it's a busy, that's a really busy crossing, it's going to be really hard to close it, to do this work, but it is one that we feel like is worth doing in 2015, so the scope is similar, the railroad comes in for a few days and puts in the panels and closes the road, and then our guys come in after they're done with the panels, open the road back up, and we do half at a time or lanes at a time to make sure we maintain traffic flow. The split is typical for this portion, for UPR, it's 35%, city share is 65%, historically those have been fair estimates, and typically they come in underneath that, but at least it's a, usually a worst-case scenario, that number, so it is a little more than the 50,000 we budgeted, that's kind of on average, they range anywhere from 40 to 70 each year, depending on how big the crossing is, and so that'll just, I'll stand for questions.
Any questions for staff?
How would you characterize the, you say, it says in here, additional 23,000 will be made up with savings or reductions in other projects, are those other projects in the 2015 subCIP?
Yes.
Any idea what, which ones those might be, or do you think we might be able to find savings in other ones that'll
Yeah.
Still be able to allow us to do the full?
Yeah, I attach that to all of these microsurfings, microsurfing is one.
Okay.
We're $23,000 under today.
Okay.
So that's one that's helpful, crack seal was $29,000 under, so it's typically, we, we try to, I mean, it's helpful, and I'd like to thank my guys that do this work, but it's been, it's been a process the last few years to get kind of our process figured out, and it's been pretty good as far as estimates go on microsurfing, crack seal, and milling inlay, so milling inlay is a little more of a, of a curve ball depending on gas prices, but yeah, we got, we got really good bids this year, and we were under on both of those projects more than this amount, now granted, we usually have some contingencies built into those projects, so then that could take some of that money, but bottom line is we about, looks to me, we've already made up the 23,000 based on, on the current CIP that we have here attached.
Yeah, I, I ask only because I, I do see the savings in other ones, and I just have not seen a reduction on anything, so it sounds like that's because there hasn't been one.
Not yet.
So, okay, good.
Yeah, we have to, basically, Rod will tell you, we have a, a budget and we have to hit it, and by the end of the year, if we have to cut something, we have to cut something, or cut something along the way, but yeah, right now, so far, so good.
Right, and then I had another question on, just on a, on, on one of the past railroad crossings, because most of them look like they've been pretty successful projects, I've heard a lot of positive feedback from them.
Right.
The one negative I have heard from is the one on Belmont and Magnolia.
Right.
Have you been getting some comments on that as well, or?
Yeah, that one, they, they actually haven't done any work on that one, we, as a city, did all of the approach work to that, but the, what is it, the four feet in between, around the tracks, they put in some old panels and moved some around to try to make it better, but that's one that's probably, needs to be on the list here before long. I guess we felt like it's better than it was based on the new concrete that's out there, but the track, the actual tracks and the crossings, it's not very good.
Okay, well, that's, that's good to hear, because I, the comment I was getting was that they fixed it and it's just as bad as it ever was.
Yeah, and that's, that's a good question, and education-wise, yeah, the railroad didn't do it, I mean, they, they didn't do anything in that one.
Right, okay.
Really, it was really us trying to get everything up to where our, our, our portion was, and then basically, I mean, you drive fast enough, you go, you glide right over it, I mean, it's, that's, that's the hope.
Well, the comment I got was, hey, the one over by the school was really good, but the one on Belmont, not so good.
Yes, not as good, right, yes, yeah, when, when the, when the UP comes in and actually does that, and we, you know, we can prioritize that when we think it's necessary, but we just didn't think it's as bad as some of the others now that we've kind of fixed both sides, yeah, and Neil is a really good one, our guys did a really good job on that one, and some of the ones, that's why we like having them do the work, because they, they're able to do a pretty good job with it when we're, when they're done, when UP is done with their work. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Stack, anyone from the public care to comment on this? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for possible action.
I move we approve resolution number 157176, authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement with Union Pacific Railroad to perform at-grade public road crossing improvements on East Crawford Street.
Second. Motion is second to adopt resolution number 15-7176, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0.
Item 7.5, authorize the purchase of traffic signal video cameras and radar wave tronics detection systems.
Mr. Stack.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, this is also an annual subCIP item for our traffic signals, we have 63 traffic, traffic controlled intersections with the traffic signals, basically, we have 34 of those have signal, camera, video detection, so when you drive up to a, to a traffic signal, the, the signal is supposed to sense if you're there or not, and as traffic goes through, it senses whether it should extend the signal, or when it terminates, it's, it's got certain termination parameters, those are done by detection devices, 34 of those that we currently have are video, and the others are, they're the wires in the, in the pavement, basically, they, I don't know what they're called, who should know that?
Loop detectors?
Yes, the loop detectors, okay, loop detectors are pretty tried and true, they've been around a long time, they're kind of a, a radio wave or a wave magnetic type of thing in the pavement, which, they're fairly, fairly reliable, however, over time, as you mill intersections or you do improvements, intersections, they get, they get old, they break, you mill them up, in this case, at Ninth, Ninth and Magnolia, one of the legs is, is not working, so our guys either have to go out there and trench it in again, which is cutting concrete, which is tough, and then you also have to run the wires from basically the, the point that you have to detect them to, which is the cabinet, and it's usually on one corner, so you're always having to run them quite a ways, it seems like, so over time, we believe that the cameras are a benefit, they're not, they're not always a benefit, but at big intersections, Ninth and Magnolia being a huge intersection with many legs and it's a, it's a monster, many different lane intersection, that is an example of one where the, the cameras help us because we don't have to go out and do loops, and they're, we can stand at the camera and, or at the, at the signal box, and you can adjust the, the signal as, as on the fly and as, as traffic is going, so anyway, that's just a little bit of history on, we're probably not going to ever have all 63 with cameras, because they're, they're fairly expensive, and to replace them is expensive, and they're, as I talk, as I'm going to talk about here in a minute, they're not always reliable, so, but they are pretty good for most of our intersections, and we've got pretty good experience with them, however, we are looking to try a new technology called this radar wave tronics technology, that's the other half of this blue sheet. Radar is helpful in the long run, we believe, and from what other cities and some of the the technology out there says, that it's, it's reliable, and you don't have to maintain it near as much, basically, they, long-term maintenance costs are just, just seem to be a lot lower, so we felt like, well, this would be a place, I-35 and Magnolia is an example right now where they're just on timer, the loops are, were bad, KDOT did some work out there as well, and they have just, we felt like we were either going to camera those or use this radar technology, the radar technology, we feel like works a little better in this case, based on the configuration of the intersection, I put a picture in here of how it works, it's kind of a big 90 degrees or a quarter of a, of a circle, basically, but these, the reason to try these are, they do not, they're not affected by sun reflection, fog, darkness, not affected by blowing snow, wind or rain, you don't have to adjust them, you don't have to go clean them, our guys have to go out and clean the lenses on our, on our traffic cameras periodically, depending on how well they're working, you know, wind will have a tendency to sometimes shift them, they just require some maintenance that, pretty typical, normal for our traffic signals, however, if these, if this system really does work, and you don't have to clean them, you don't have to adjust them, there's no battery replacement, they're not affected by a lot of weather, then this could be a long-term solution for, I mean, they're definitely more expensive upfront, but it may pay off in the long run and be more reliable as a city, so we felt like this would be a, a place to, to try this technology, and it does give us competition as well, which, GATI Sales has been a really good supplier and provider, and they're local, not local, but they're Wichita, but they service this area really well, they're really very helpful, so I don't want to say, you know, anything about that as far as that goes, but it would be nice to have somebody else that has a fresh, fresh look at things, and then we can have help from Kansas City and Wichita in this case, that's what this, it would get us as another supplier into the mix here a little bit, which I think helps us in the long run as well, so I would stand for questions.
Any questions for staff?
Is there some guideline that determined that we had to have signals at 135 and Magnolia?
There are, it was, it's been asked before, and it make, you make, it makes you wonder, but that had something to do with, I've asked KDOT this, and it was because of sight distance out there, is because basically the, the curvature and the sight distance in that, in that, of that bridge required, because we don't have them at Crawford, we don't have them at Schelling, so you do wonder why that was the case, but when I've talked to KDOT about that very question, that's what they said, is it, it did not meet the sight distance criteria for a non-signalized intersection, it was put in that way, and they have to stay, based on the MUTCD and the requirements of that intersection, both those off-ramps.
Yeah, I would agree, driving it, it's a bit of a nuisance, but on the other hand, when you're, when you are southbound, you exit on the ramp, you get up there, and you're usually looking to make a right-hand turn into town to the east, your sight distance from west, or the eastbound traffic coming from the west is a little bit impaired, now to what degree, I don't know, but that's where they're coming from.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's what they told me, and I guess the, the plans and the engineer who designed it, that's what they came up with, so it's.
So this system would make it less of a nuisance, then?
Yeah, right now, it's on a timer, I don't know if you've been out there, but it's, we get a lot of complaints on, you sit there, and you sit there, and you sit there, and it's just on a timer, so it's, timer have, they have some advantages, they're cheap and they're easy, and they, they work, we have one at Santa Fe and, and Ash right now, if you guys drive Santa Fe and Ash, it's just on timer, so, you're driving, you see it, and you know, okay, I'm either going to make it, or I'm not, because it's a 25-second cycle, so, for us to drive it, we know kind of what to expect, but for the person who drives up there, and it turns right when you get there, and makes you sit through a 25-second red light when nobody's coming, it's, that's a little bit of frustration, so, that's what's happening right now at Magnolia and I-35, so we feel like this will be a good, good use of this technology.
Will that, will these detect a motorcycle rider?
They say they will, yeah, that's, that's a big deal.
With a bicycle, them as well?
Yeah, that's what.
That's sometimes a concern with the loop systems.
It's a concern, right.
Yeah, because of the weight issue.
What about somebody on a used, battery-powered, EZ go-kart, will it detect?
There's a lot of lead in those batteries, right?
Possible. I'm having fun with that. Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Stack, anyone from the public care to comment on this?
Thank you.
You want my name again?
Sure, just in case somebody's just joining us.
Norman Mantle, Pleasant Hill Road, these radars will not detect motorcycles, we can go right through them.
Really?
Yeah. How much is this whole system going to cost?
Looks like $42,501.
And how long will they be constitutional if next year, if the Supreme Court rules this is invasion of privacy, so there we got $42,000 worth of equipment we got to take down?
I guess one year.
Let me explain the context of these, they're not intended to be used for law enforcement, they're only to be used to trigger the change in the traffic lights.
Yeah.
If you, if you look at our, and this is really, this is a very good question in light of the prior agenda item, but when you see those cameras, they're, they're on little white poles, and you'll see the little white cameras, we have, a little different from these, but we have them in other intersections, they are not used for law enforcement in any way, we don't, we don't write tickets from those, they don't track that information, they're only used to see movement, to then interpret it and change the traffic signal.
But other states are using them to track people.
I don't know if they're using that specific type of a camera, there are camera systems for writing tickets, we don't use those, and there are legal issues in some states now, some states are changing their laws and so forth, we don't use those, we've never recommended those for probably the reasons that you're thinking of.
And these systems are unreliable, radar is not foolproof, there is only one system that is actually 100% accurate, and it's not radar, so it makes mistakes, your radar systems will only detect certain vehicles, if there's three of them there, it will only detect the large vehicle, so you're buying an unreliable system.
No, we don't use these for law enforcement purposes, we use these for traffic purposes, and with the exception, probably, well, I'm not sure, they're like any, any piece of equipment you have, there's always a small likelihood they can malfunction, when we're made aware, we go, we check, we maintain, they work again, but generally speaking, we've had very, very good luck with these in the past, and they are more reliable than the looped systems from the perspective of lighter vehicles like a motorcycle or bicyclist or someone else, so from that perspective, they're actually better.
Right, you, you think of it more like, instead of a, instead of a radar detector, think of it when you walk in, you, a store, and you see the doors open, and something senses you walk in, and it dings the sensor, that's what it's doing, it's basically bouncing, bouncing the radar off your body, or if it continues to see a vehicle there, I assume it's, it's, it's basically operates kind of like a Doppler, it just sort of goes there and says, there's a vehicle there, I need to change the light, it didn't say there's a vehicle there, he's speeding through the, the stoplight or anything like that, it, it simply is just telling it that's a vehicle there, and that's the same as our cameras, it just looks out and takes an image of the, it doesn't store it at all, it just looks and says, there's a vehicle there, I need to change the light.
That's exactly right, it's just there to trigger the change in the light, the advantage of these is they can look a lot further out than you would typically put your, your wire loops in.
Right.
And so they're a more efficient signal, and being more efficient, they should, they're intended, and I believe they do, they're proven to help traffic flow.
Right.
That's less, less fuel, more efficient traffic flow, that's the advantage of these, this technology.
Yeah, it's not a radar.
We've had it for many, many years, and it's been good.
Yeah, it's not a radar thing, but.
But it's still my contention this system is defeatable.
Well, I.
You can interrupt it.
Hope not for the guy that's sitting at the stoplight.
I don't know that a person can interrupt it, like I said, if it's working properly, it, they work fine, it's like any piece of equipment.
We can.
Okay, how do you do that? And why would you do that?
Well, if I'm going to rob the bank, I'm telling you I'm coming.
These aren't used for law enforcement purposes, they're just used to change the signal from.
Mr. Gates, I'm not going to tell you I'm going to do something.
I think if you're going to rob the bank, you're going to want the light to change. Yeah, so you can get out of there faster, yeah.
Well, that's what I can manipulate, I'm just saying, pointing out the weaknesses of it.
Actually, manipulating of a, of a, of a traffic signal, I believe, is, is a, is a crime, I don't want to put our officer on the spot, but I, I can pretty well guess it's a crime, and I also think that if you run up and the thing malfunctions, I think there may also be, again, I don't want to put our, our officer on, on the spot, but I believe also if you sit there and the light doesn't change, there's kind of a, and maybe the standard traffic ordinance, you may remember that, like a motorcycle rolls up, light doesn't change, they have that ability to, to turn right after traffic is both cleared out, I believe, now don't quote me on that, don't start turning left.
I think you're correct, I think that's fairly new.
Yeah, so I think it's, it's there, so, but again, defeating the radar, the way this operates would defeat the purpose, because you would sit there at a light in perpetuity, you could basically sit there until the cows come home, defeating, if you're going to make the light turn green, it's going to make you sit there at a red light, so.
Eric Snowden showed us, everything is defeatable, so, there's kids out there that.
Well, the, the other thing is, in a worst-case scenario.
Yeah.
You're just going to sit there till the light changes on its own anyway.
Yeah.
So it's not designed, it's only there to make life a little more convenient for you, I mean, if it, if it breaks down, you just wait for the light to turn green, and then you go.
Yeah, there, there's no reason to defeat it, I'll put my money on the cameras.
Yeah, 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 I think it's good, but the comments are always welcome, of course, so, thank you.
Well, it's my money, you're spending it foolishly.
That's true, that's true. Okay, well, any other public comments on this device? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for possible action.
I move that we authorize the purchase of traffic signal video cameras and radar wave tronics detection systems.
Second.
Strong couple of seconds on that, this must be a hot item that commissioners are really standing for. Motion is second to authorize the purchase of traffic signal video cameras and radar wave tronics detection systems, any further discussion?
If we want to give an amount in the.
I can, I can, if it's, if it's okay, I can add that to, if you'd like, is that?
That's fine.
I mean, are we purchasing this from somebody, or a particular vendor?
I'll go ahead and, I'll go ahead and read it again.
Yeah. Okay.
I, I move that we approve the purchase of one traffic signal video detection system from GATI Sales in the amount of $16,995, and one wave tronics radar detection system from Mid-America Signal for $25,506, for a total purchase price of $42,501.
Still the same enthusiastic second? Okay, there we go. Wave tronics, that just sounds dangerous, doesn't it, they really just kind of, so motion is second, and I'll keep it simple, to authorize the purchase of traffic signal video cameras and radar wave tronics detection system for a total amount of $42,501, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0.
Item 7.6, resolution number 15-7177, adopting the 2015 through 2019 capital improvement program.
Mr. Frands.
I was moving before you called my name, I hope you don't consider that to be presumptuous. What I, what I think we'd like to do with this item is to consider this a preliminary presentation, this is put together because there are some items coming up reasonably, reasonably soon, within the next two to three weeks, in which this perspective would be useful, this is scheduled for planning commission consideration on February 17th, and then if, if this body would consider it again in, in two weeks from today on the 23rd, that would, would put things in the, in the right order and give you a chance to consider some of the, some of the considerations involved in the plan, there are some changes in this year's plan that, that, that might be, might generate some discussion, and so this will give us the, the time to do that, so what I plan to do today is go over the, kind of an overview of some of the changes, and then try to address any questions you might have at, at that particular. might have at, at that particular time, then we can consider it in a final form on the 23rd. I think that's a reasonable, reasonable approach to this. We've been working on the update to the CIP, the formal update, for several months. Basically, the plan tries to tie our perceived needs for capital projects, including our annual vehicles and equipment sub-CIPs, to funding sources that are available to do those. And in addition, normally within the CIP, we provide a listing of those projects that we consider to be identified but unfunded. That is, they're identified, they're scoped, and there's a reasonably reliable cost on those projects. There just isn't a funding source that's been identified for those. Those would probably be considered next in line to those that are on the funding list. There's also a list of future review projects, which are perceived, at least potential needs, but they really haven't been completely scoped out or completely sized or thought out yet. But they are a, a, a potential future need. Those would be the third tier of, of projects to be considered here. Fiscal impacts of the CIP are complex, extend over a long period of time. Even though this plan runs through 2019, I did include some information relating to fiscal impacts, particularly on the bonded projects to, I believe, 2022, because that is, for a project that's done in 2019, you don't really begin to see those fiscal impacts until a couple of years later. One of the large sources of funding for the, for the plan, in addition to the bonded projects, is a special sales tax plan. There's a special sales tax which does sunset in 2019. So we do have projects scheduled in that, through that time, the plan is at this point, or that source is completely committed to projects. So if we wanna push something into the plan, we need to take something out or find some other, other source for those, those items. This year, we did make some changes in those, in that component of the, of the plan. We did have an electrical system upgrade for the police department building, originally scheduled for 2017. That has been moved into the future review category, simply because we wanted to get a little better handle on what that might, might entail and to determine what the actual need for that might be. We have modified the entryway signage project to start in 2016 with the replacement or the provision of one sign per year. Through 2019, that gets three of the signs in place and leaves a fourth for future, some sort of future funding that's not yet identified. We added a project to replace civil defense warning system, the sirens located around town, around the city. We're actually replacing one of those sirens this year. We had, I believe it was two that failed. We're replacing them with one. It will provide the necessary coverage. However, the entire system is quite, quite antiquated and does need replacement. We are gonna start seeing failures if we do not do so. I have that scheduled in the program as a, basically a five-year lease purchase with the down payment to be, to start in 2016, which would be when the material would go into place. That would permit three years of payments out of the special sales tax and two years either out of a renewal of that special sales tax or out of presumably general funds resources if it is not renewed. Cost on that project is, is anticipated to be about $500,000 in total. But we think it's a very important thing to do. The general fund stabilization of the special sales tax is scheduled to terminate with 20, with the year 2015. That's this year. There is, I believe, $360,000 coming out of special sales tax to supplement general fund operations this year. That has been ratcheted back somewhat. We have eliminated, you know, a number of years ago, there was a $400,000 supplement for bond and interest and a $400,000 general fund. We have eliminated the bond and interest supplement. We've rolled the general fund supplement back to a small degree. But again, that, that will place pressure on the general fund portion of our budgeting for 2016. We have added renovation and repair of the spray grounds at Jerry Ivy Park in 2015. During review of those facilities, it was determined that they needed some substantial work. And I believe that that is plugged in at $60,000. They were not operational last year because of the issues. And we would like to get those up and running again this year. Plan is structured, projects a mill levy for the bond and interest fund that essentially stabilizes at about seven mills throughout the planning period. That compares to current levy of 6.75 mills, so it's a slightly higher level than the current level, but is fairly comparable in terms of long-term demand. Water and sewer projects proposed in the plan have been incorporated in the five-year rate study, which we have covered at the end of 2014 in December in association with the, with the water rate considerations. As I noted, material portion of the financing is made available through the 410 cent special sales tax, which then sets in 2019. That generates a total of about four to five million dollars annually and is responsible for some of the larger projects that are done. A large portion of that, or a significant portion of that, does go to, as was provided for in the election, the payment of the bonds on the aquatic facility. About $1,350,000 a year goes to pay that off. There's another 1.6 million or thereabouts in 2015 that is slated for street improvements, in addition to the roughly 1.3 million in special gas tax that goes to that same purpose. Other projects out of that particular fund for 2015 include replacement of the ball field lights at East Crawford Recreation Area. There's a levy trails match. There's a payment on the management software for the city. There's a small set aside for aquatic center maintenance that is scheduled for the next several years to build up funds to support that facility. Small items for sidewalk repairs. And then, of course, there's some vehicles and equipment and buildings, facilities money that, that is charged to that particular fund. I think at that point, I would, I would stop and ask if you have any specific questions. If you wanna talk about any specific projects, I do have two sets of technology here, so, you know.
Any questions for staff on this?
Are we taking action today, other than?
There's, the, the idea would be to not take action to today, but then digest this over the next two weeks. And at that point, then we could, after the planning commission's considered and has their recommendation, then we can, we can actually take an action on this.
Yeah, and commissioners, if you have thoughts, concerns, suggestions, whatever it might be, as you look at this, please feel free to forward those. And then that way, we'll be able to get a response back to you and/or determine if there's additional time that may need to be paid to any particular items.
One question here, and I, maybe, and I just don't know where to find it. If a certain percentage of a major construction was to include funds for public art, is that listed as a contingency in here somewhere, or is that something has to?
The, the project estimates, as they're presented in here, if the project includes an art component, it would be included as a part of that estimate. And as I say, the Iron Avenue, I know, includes an art component that you are currently discussing. And Greeley Bridge did it one time, but I believe that has been withdrawn. Is, is that correct?
I can answer it out.
Okay. You wanna, you wanna come, come answer?
Commissioners, each year, the Community Art and Design Advisory Committee reviews the five-year plan. And as an example, the spray park was, we knew an immediate and pressing need and, and is already by its design gonna have a, a unique look to it and, and that we didn't have to impose or suggest an art project with that. Anything that's on the list for the next five years is the committee's communication to you that it's of interest. It doesn't mean it happens and it doesn't mean it's guaranteed. It means that it may come back to the commission or to the staff for a suggestion of, yes, we concur. Right now, when you see a reference for four years out or so, the restroom enhancements at Oakdale and Sunset Parks, we thought that might be a place to be able to consider and integrate art. But you, you would make that decision after staff supported that recommendation and, and, and a proposal for construction and a design element would, would come forward. So we, we don't anticipate much for the next few years of identifying a project that, unlike a city that has a percent for the arts program, this is very targeted to specific projects where we feel like we can get the best bang for the buck. And, and then you'd have a, a chance later on to make that decision as funding and the project scope was further defined. I, I hope that helps.
Yep.
Okay.
And one other question. Are there any other sources to replace the $360,000 for the general fund stabilization? Just since, I, I'm not an expert on state finances, but everyone says, prepare for an unsure future here.
There's nothing new that we see coming down the pike. You know, the choices are, you know, growth in the, in the, our base sales tax, growth in the property tax, or property valuation, or changes in those, those rates. But no, we have not identified a specific dollar amount coming from anywhere new to replace that. So it was.
Were there any other set asides specifically for that purpose anywhere else?
No, I don't believe so. Those, one of the purposes of the special sales tax, when it was initiated, was to provide some tax rate stabilization. And that's what we've attempted to do with that supplementation. The idea was, from the start, that we would, through either natural growth, growth and assessed valuation, through natural growth in the sales taxes, that we would be able to reduce that subsidy over a period of time. And, and we have to some degree, but we still have that 360,000 left that is a supplement this year that is not in the plan as it is currently structured for next year.
Are you comfortable with where a general fund or a reserve?
No.
No. It is, it, it looks a little better this year than it did last year. But it's, we still have ways to go to get to an adequate reserve position in the, in our general fund.
Yeah, commissioners, it's about half of where we'd like it to be. And I really think that the 5 million, I believe, is our revised target. But I personally don't think that's enough. I think it should be seven or eight million to be truly, really healthy to take on just about any unexpected thing. But five, I'd feel really good about it. So we're no, we're not there. And part of the challenge we have this year, next year, the next year after that, and many years, is to build that fund balance in the general fund, to take on unexpected items, to deal with unexpected weather events, emergencies, to ensure that our, our bond rating is healthy as we issue bonds and get lower interest rates. So there's a lot of reasons for that. But we've, we've found that even coming out of the recession, we have not seen our property values in our community grow. And that's a concern, because that's a, a major indicator of our overall economic growth. We have seen sales taxes be okay, but that's just one piece. We need to see the property values grow, because that shows demand for property and investment in property by the business community. And we just haven't seen that yet. And so annually, there's been a few hundred thousand dollars left on the table, just simply because of that. I say left on the table, not actually been placed on the table, so, that we haven't had. And that does add up in time. Interest rates are still historically low for investments. There's a few hundred dollars, a hundred thousands of dollars compared to prior to the recession that we do not have as well. You can add those two up and you're probably at least a million dollars, I would say, maybe probably more than that, and some other factors. But we've been, we've been trying to gradually and stably grow the general fund into a healthier, take it to a healthier place. But we're still pretty far away as we see pressure of needing to keep our salaries competitive, so we can retain and recruit to respond to increased costs for things like capers benefits that may be an issue in about a year. Again, we got a little reprieve this year on that cost, but next year, we probably won't if they tinker with it some more at the state budget level. Our health benefit, which is, is continuing to need some attention right now, and just the cost of goods that increase, we try to respond to. So we have a lot of challenges with that general fund. We're in, we're stable. We're headed the right direction. We're just not where we wanna be. I, I wouldn't say the sky's falling by any means, but we're definitely not where we wanna be.
I, I would say that the, one of the things that has become more flexible, and there may not be any more money available there, but in, in terms of state funds for transportation projects, you know, we used to go through this process of identifying a project that we thought that they would help us build. And it might be a couple of years out, and then we'd get there and they'd help us build that project and refund us for some of the investment. That, they changed the way they handle that now, and it's, it's actually now called Federal Funds Exchange, in which they give us an allotted amount of money every year. And we agree to take that and not apply for, for specific grants, so that is more flexible. And there are a number of the street projects in the program now that do have a federal fund, funds allotment allotted to them. And we don't have to go through that application process and, and be able to do this project with, you know, 50% federal funds and not apply any of this. So it's more flexible, but it's not really any more money. It, it does make it a little easier to plan.
So what date are we looking at on this? The 23rd? Bringing this back on the 23rd?
Yeah, that's, that's two weeks. I don't believe there's a meeting next week.
Yeah, I think that tentatively will work. We just wanted to make sure that the Planning Commission did their job.
Are they gonna be taking action on, on this?
Yeah, typically, I think they do. They, they provide an advisory. I don't know if it's advisory or not. It's, there's a statutory role that they have. They don't dictate the plan for you, but they do review it, discuss it in line with the planning of our community and then provide you with their.
I think the comment is normally that it's consistent with the, with the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, that's correct.
Or that there are no inconsistencies with the comprehensive plan.
So do we need a?
You really don't need to take specific action tonight.
Take an action to postpone, so we?
Yeah, if you'd like to postpone the, any action regarding this to a particular date, that'd be fine.
Yeah, seems to make sense. Okay. Well, anyone from the public here today to discuss the CIP? Wow. Sure, talk about you in the press all the time about how you're spending the money, but they never show up when you're actually talking about it, do they?
Back on us?
Back on you.
All right. Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we postpone action on resolution number 15-7177, adopting the 2015 to 2019 capital improvement program budget until February 23rd, 2015, to allow the Solana City Planning Commission to review and take action.
Second.
Sorry.
Motion, the second, to postpone the adoption of resolution. Motion to second to postpone the adoption of resolution number 15-7177 for two weeks. So what date did you say? I'm sorry.
February 23.
To the February 23 meeting. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries, 5-0, and that's postponed till our February 23 session. Moving on to development business.
Item 8.1, application number M14-24, requesting review and possible amendment of the bicycle route map of the Salina-Kansas comprehensive plan to substitute an internally-produced bicycle master plan map that would more clearly depict the goals and priorities of the cycling community than the current bicycle route map in the comprehensive plan document 8.1A, first reading ordinance number 15-10766.
Why don't we take a quick five-minute break and come back to you, Mr. Andrew, if that works okay for you? Will that be all right?
Thank you. I appreciate that.
My AG and fellow commissioners.
On this album, I think you hear a theme running through of unrequited love, or maybe in the case of this song, unrequited longing?
Yes, yes. I've never been in a relationship before, ever in my life, and...
Ever.
Ever in my life. And I wanted to make a statement that I do know was so sad to me, something that I...
You know any? There's one in St. Thomas. Oh, yeah. Yeah, I'm going to go see him too. Yeah.
I tell you, Sun City, Arizona, looks pretty good right now.
All right, we're back among the... Do we need legal counsel, maybe? I don't anticipate. Mr. Andrew, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, we're talking about a possible amendment to the Salina comprehensive plan. Back in 2010, when the plan was first adopted, there was a figure 2.10 that was placed in the plan, and it was pretty much identified that that was a placeholder or a concept map. And it was identified as an implementation item to refine that based on actual study and community input. And so there are some important concepts relating to connectivity in the comprehensive plan. There was a community survey done. 50% of those surveys were supportive of using tax dollars to fund transportation improvements, and that being done in a multimodal sense, which would include CityGo system, walking, bicycling, and the automobile. And so staff thinks the best means of coordinating the bicycle network with our vehicle transportation network is to have a bicycle master plan. And we've kind of outlined some of the advantages that we think of why adopting a plan would be important. First of all, it would set a vision and expectation, a roadmap for where Salina wants to get to. It would build upon past projects and successes such as the Levy Trail and some of the other trails that have already been constructed. It would serve as a guide for policymakers as to where to add bicycling infrastructure such as multi-use trails or bike lanes. It would help determine through the capital improvement program and other means, the level of funding for adding bicycle facilities. It would certainly help the city's efforts as we seek out grant funds of various kinds to support the system. If you can show that a portion that you're seeking grant funds and how it fits into the community's master plan, that will certainly strengthen a grant application. We have done some preliminary work on seeking a bronze designation as a bicycle-friendly community, and having a master plan is an important element in becoming a bicycle-friendly community. And certainly, it will help with increasing bicycle ridership and making bicycling safer. So we've highlighted in your report there some of the types of bicycle facilities that make up a system. And as we talked to the ad hoc bicycle advisory committee and our various advisory boards and people who are out riding the community, we asked them to look at two things. We asked them to do, first, we want the route system to be interconnected so that we can get access to every major destination in the city. And then the second thing is to have a successful bicycle network, and average bicyclist should feel comfortable bicycling on designated routes during any time of the day. And the emphasis should be on average bicyclist. If you want to encourage ridership, you have to make it bicycle-friendly for all types of riders. And what Dustin's got up on the screen here are just some physical examples of the terms that were used in the report. On the left there is a bicycle lane, and that simply refers to a pavement marking and providing a separate lane for bicyclists on the traveled way of a street. And the difference between that and a buffered bicycle lane is in some communities and on more heavily-traveled routes, a buffered bike lane has a buffer that is between the vehicle traffic and the bicycle to give them an extra feeling of protection, particularly on streets that have higher speed limits, so that the bicycle has an extra level of protection. Another type of option, which we have, say, on North Ohio Street out towards I-70, is the wide shoulders that are utilized as a bike lane. This is a difficult picture to see. The only one I'm familiar with nearby is the city of Manhattan has turned Morrow Street into a bicycle boulevard, and that is, it's using certain traffic calming features and sometimes traffic circles and other things to give the bicyclists a sense that they have priority. It still functions as a street, but there are things to do to give bicycles priority. The simplest form is just on a low-traveled street or an average residential street as opposed to specifically marking a lane. You simply have signs that alert both rider and vehicle users that it is a signed route and that they should expect bicycles to be operating on that street. There's no separate lanes. It's simply designated as a route. And to supplement that, you can put shared lane markings there or sharrows to remind people on the street that they should look for bicycle traffic on the street. Multi-use paths, what we have along South Ohio and East Magnolia and Schilling Road, they're usually 10 feet or more in width, and they're designed for bicycles, but also for strollers, for walkers, for all types of uses. And then the more specific version of that, which we don't have it in the community now, would be what's referred to as a cycle track, which would be a paved path separate from the street but limited to bicycles only. So those are some of the physical examples of bike infrastructure. And then Dustin, I guess I'd ask you to go to the main map, not the merge map, but the bicycle master plan map. And so this is the map that's under consideration for adoption. And if you go over here to the legend, the red is to indicate where we have existing trails already built and constructed. The green lines indicate expansion of that system. So the Levy Trail shows the plan to extend that all the way around the community. It shows a future path that would parallel the Old River Channel as far as improvements that might be made to that area. The purple solid lines indicate streets that are recommended to be bicycle routes. And then within that category, we also have some areas that are shown as dashed. So if you could scroll up, Dustin, show more of the south part of the community. One example of that is, it was pretty much agreed that Magnolia Road between Ninth Street and the K-State Salina Campus and Centennial Road, that is a desirable future bicycle route. But the reason it's dashed is because no one could recommend it as a bicycle route in its present condition, that there are enhancements that need to be made. And so part of the adoption of this and showing that as a dashed area said, well, this needs to be an area of focus as improvements are considered for Magnolia Road connecting that link, that bicycle, how bicycles would be accommodated would be an important part of that. And then if you go over to the southeast, Dustin, we've also got dashed lines over here on Markley Road and Magnolia. It's recognized that that is pretty heavily used now by some of the more experienced bicyclists, but to accommodate the average bicyclists and make them feel comfortable, it's identified as a desirable future bike route, but it's got the dashed lines to reflect that some physical improvements are needed there to make that a truly usable and desirable bike route. And then I'll have you go back out by the airport area, Dustin. Some items that the planning commission focused on at their last hearing was, we had what was identified as a lack of a good east-west route. We had a very heavily north-south bicycle route map. And so Republic was designated as the primary east-west feeder out from Santa Fe, or actually all the way back to Lewis, out to the K-State-Salina area. There's a very, not very widely-known fact that we have a street that the city commission closed in the 1980s called Cherokee Drive. The right-of-way was retained. It was simply closed to traffic, but it's actually a straight shot through from Republic at Sunset School all the way down to Cloud Street. And so the planning commission felt like that was a given that you could go all the way from Republic to Cloud without intersection or interruption. They're showing that as a potential future trail route there. And then over in the airport area, it was identified that to get Schilling Road tied in, Centennial, Waterwell, those are shown as dashed, again, to improve Centennial Road's usability, getting the tie back to Schilling School and back to the Ninth Street area. And then as plans for improving Centennial from Waterwell to Schilling to incorporate a multi-use trail as part of those improvements. So those were some of the add-ons that you wouldn't necessarily have in the map in your packet, but that the planning commission added in their action on the 20th. So this has been reviewed pretty thoroughly by the city's ad hoc bicycle committee. Maps were handed out to members used on Saturday bike rides and other things, and feedback was given. It was also given to planning commissioners and park and recreation advisory board members. And so this map, as it's put together, is based on input from all those parties. And so your possible action today would be to adopt this bicycle master plan map as a substitute and amendment for the current map in the comprehensive plan, with any changes or additions you think are appropriate. If you think we're off track, you could refer this back to staff, the advisory committee and planning commission for additional studies, or you could decide that no changes should be adopted at this time. What we wanted to point out is that this is not setting any design standards. It's not prejudging any of these routes as to whether they be bike lanes or simply signed bicycle routes. This is just a first step to identify what the routes are so as mill and overlay projects are considered or other things are considered, then all options are on the table. So there's additional input and steps to go to decide what type of bike facility would go on each particular route. I think the last slide we have, Dustin, is something that we showed the bicycle advisory committee. And this is a plan that was implemented in 1979 during the first energy crisis, and it was kind of a trial system. And it didn't have a plan or any kind of backing. It was kind of done as an experiment or model, but it set up a system of bike lanes and bike route signs on Marymount Road from Crawford to East Iron, and then down East Iron to the bridge over the river and just to the east of that. But there were actual marked bicycle lanes and signs. And sometime in the middle 80s, those were all taken down. There wasn't any funds. There wasn't any plan behind it, and there weren't any funds to continue maintenance of that. But that was, in staff's visit with the city of Wichita about their bicycle master plan, is they just reminded us that every sign that you put out, every pavement marking that you put out, once you do that, it's something that needs to be maintained or the system will not be maintained. So this comes to you with a great deal of public input, and it's, the idea is, again, it's an internally-produced bicycle route map, and if there are changes, it's much easier to update and change. The planning commission asked for a map that, so they could see how CityGo routes compared with bicycle routes. There was also a question about if you're riding a bike, can you take your bicycle on a CityGo bus? The answer to that is no presently. They don't have racks or any of the things that some of the larger bus systems have in terms of mounting your bike on the bus, but those are things to consider. Any of the maps that you have in your packet that you're interested in, we can get you larger versions of those. We realize eight and a half by 11 is not particularly easy to read. But we have mapped the CityGo bus routes independently, and then we merged the CityGo on this map as a merger of the CityGo routes with the bicycle routes so they could be compared. So with that, we'd be open to any questions you have.
Any questions for staff on this?
Our request for safe route to school grant funds integrated with this particular map or would be related to this map? They would be, yes. And any other type of grant applications that are out there. We've gotten funds from a variety of sources as we've built our bicycle trails. The very first Levy Trail done in 1993 was done with KDOT funds. And so as we look at the various sources of funding, the idea would be that this is the adopted master plan for bike routes for the city, and that this is how that segment that we're seeking funds for fits in with that plan.
Hey, Dustin, could you go to the one with the dashed lines for the ones that aren't currently there but are identified as needed? And my question on those would be, those routes have been identified. Is there a proposed process to go through to prioritize those?
That would be where the next steps come in, and that's where, again, you've just discussed your capital improvement program. And obviously, the way that this would be implemented would be, in some fashion, through capital improvements, grant funds, those types of things. But in order to prioritize them in the capital improvements, we thought we needed to start with a plan, and then based on those segments, you all can prioritize those as to what you think needs the most attention. And some of that's going to relate to when a road project comes up on those particular segments. But as an example, there were a number in the bicycling community that thought that Santa Fe ought to be, you know, the connecting route. You ought to be able to ride from Kansas Wesleyan to St. John Military, and that'd be a... But the way that Santa Fe is configured right now is less than ideal or safe for bicycle riding. So what we've shown on this plan is, there's been a desire expressed for that, but it would take some design changes, physical modifications to how Santa Fe works before you could do that as a bicycle route.
Commissioners, I think when we, one of the first things we'll do here, and we have some of this work done, is that when you look at each of those roads, we'll have to determine based on what we believe, well, the current condition or layout and then the future layout, if there's a, presuming that's a road that we think there will be a project, what options that give us for the type of bicycle access that we would have. If you take maybe a core street that we really don't, aren't in a position to widen, maybe considerable parking issues and so forth, we might be into a shallow situation. Or if we believe that parking is... Or if we believe that parking isn't necessary, we can take it to one side, and we have plenty of width, we might be able to deal with lanes. We don't know. So when we look at all those limitations, we can lay that out, and then at that point, I think as we integrate with the capital improvement plan, we'll really be able to say, well, if these are our plans for street projects in the future, how does that fit in with this? And are we basically able to build segments that start to connect together? There's no question it's going to be difficult to say, we'll take this whole road segment from north to south or east to west. And so it's just like when you do sidewalks, you hear people complaining about a sidewalk that goes to nowhere. Well, there may be times where there's certain segments that may appear to go to nowhere and won't get any ridership for a while, but we wouldn't offer those up if we didn't think that fairly soon there would be other segments that connect. And the old adage is, and you can apply it to this as well as sidewalks, is that if we built more of those segments 20 years ago that went to nowhere, today we'd have segments that go somewhere, and that's what we want to try to do. So we've got a little work to do on the design aspect, and then it gets into the integration of the CIP and the easy-to-pluck-off stuff, that type of thing.
Great.
Dan, you mentioned right at the beginning of your talk about having this plan being part of a bronze, being rated as a bronze bicycle community or whatever the technical term of that is. What else needs to be done in that process to get that determination? I mean, are we?
Well, what we have done in the City of Wichita has done is your first, your first crack at it is basically to get feedback, and it was one of the things, tools that we used with the Bicycle Advisory Committee and others is to say, how far away are we? Is Salina a bicycle-friendly community? How are we two steps away, four steps away from being? So part of it is submitting it based on what we have today, getting feedback from the Bicycle Federation of America to say, here's where we think the city's weak points are or where you need to strengthen. And Dan can help me with the five Es, but they, you know, they have education, they have engineering, they have all those elements, and so you have to show what you're doing in those areas. But right now, there's three cities in Kansas, Shawnee, Lawrence, and Manhattan that are bronze communities. Wichita is working on that preliminarily, but they put it off for a year, and then they're, everyone is, you basically send it in and you get your feedback, and then they tell you what you need to address. And so that's the stage that we're in.
Okay. Well, I'll tell you, I think that this is great. I think that you and planning staff have done a fantastic job, and if one of those Es is engagement, I want to compliment you guys on engaging the public and the bicycle advocacy group on this thing because community engagement's big with all of us, and I know as planners, it's critical for you guys. But I just kind of wanted to highlight the fact that there's a lot of parts on this. I mean, a lot of people would think, ah, pretty easy, just draw up some lines on the paper, that ought to suffice, but there are a lot of considerations, there are a lot of things, and I'm kind of geeky sometimes and want to go back and take this and go through the implementation matrix on our connectivity and our transportation items in the comp plan and start checking off a lot of these things that you guys accomplished with just this bicycle master plan. So I'm excited to see what this leads to because I think when we talk about being a community that's looking at downtown and the core and connectivity and all these things, I think that a bicycle master plan and being, and why I think that bronze designation is a great, would be a great first step to get to, and I know people want to get even beyond that, but if we want to be a more walkable, bikeable community that is attractive to young people and professionals and so on, I think this is a good, good step that takes us a long way in that process. And you got a lot of people involved and multi-departments, so it's a, I think it's a big accomplishment, so I.
And the next item we're going to look at is bicycle parking because if you want people to use bicycles, you got to make sure that they have facilities to park them in from here and there. So we'll be working with the Bicycle Advisory Committee, with Planning Commission eventually, with you to look at how we address bicycle parking facilities within the community. There are some who offer reductions to vehicle parking. You lose so many parking spaces in exchange for providing X number of bicycle parking stations. So we'll be looking at some things like that in the future, but that's, this was step one, and where you park your bicycles is going to be a next step.
And some free air pumps around town, too. But I think the other nice thing about this is if you have bike trails, you're going to have people out there walking on them, which is really what, you know, those of us who don't necessarily have the legs to pump a bike uphill, we can definitely walk the hill.
This was a necessary first step because you have to decide, is it Highland or is it Santa Fe? Is it Roach or is it Lewis? What is the preferred route? So we asked the bicycling community to go out, ride them, and report back, and they prefer Lewis and they prefer Santa Fe to Highland, so.
Right. And just one last comment, too, on the process is that in reading through the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting, there was a great deal of input from, it looked like the entire commission had comments and input and so on on that. So, I mean, that in and of itself is, shows that it's a good plan because it's drawing the discussion, and was it a unanimous vote on the?
Yeah, it was a nine to nothing vote to bring this plan to you, so.
Right. And so that's hard to get on sometimes with far-reaching, long-term plans such as this, though. So again, I think it was a great job by you guys.
And just tacking a little bit on what the Vice Mayor was saying about the young people and the connectivity, I mean, it's no secret about my desire for density and more walkable and bikeable and exercise-oriented community. He mentioned young people, but I would point out that, you know, studies continually that have been coming out are showing that millennials and younger elders like Randall or.
Elders.
Younger elders.
Younger elders.
Desire a lot of the same things. I only say that not to pick Randall, but because he mentioned the desire to live downtown and those sort of things, and I think, I think the things we're finding is a lot of what appeals to our young 20 and early 30-somethings also have an appeal to older people. And if you look at the people who are on this, on a lot of this bike committee, and a lot of people who I know and have coffee with and think, a lot of the older people for that Saturday morning bike ride, who some are using it for a luxury, but some are using it as true transportation to and from work. So I think it satisfies a couple ends of the spectrum of our community. Well, our own, our own count guru, Mr. Franz, is, I think, a biker to work for most days. A lot of days I wouldn't even want to go out and get in a car. I think his bike is out front. So I think it serves a lot of purposes, not just recreational, but truly transportation for people for work.
I sent an article to Mr. Franz last week that said that winter bicycle commuting had increased 61% since 2010, so.
I fall on the other 39%, but I'm glad they're doing it, so.
I applaud the work of the committee as well. I've attended a few of the meetings, and it's a very enthusiastic group, and I'm in that group where I have a bicycle that's all ready to go in the garage, but it seldom leaves the garage because, living on Highland, I don't, I don't feel safe going out on the streets, surrounding streets because there's no real delineation for bicycles. And even coming here today, I was driving up Eighth Street just as I turned right off of Prescott going north, and there was a bicyclist coming from the west, and he decided he needed to go north on Eighth Street, so he went into the left-hand lane while I was turning into the right-hand lane. And I think that the bicycle lanes will provide a measure of safety as they promote travel in a certain area of the street, and I think that'll help us as well.
So this is only step one.
Great. Well, it's a good step. Anyone from the public here to comment on this, seeing only basically city staff, I'm going to guess not. We've even lost Norman on this one, but, so, maybe. Okay, now he's gone. Okay, well, I'll bring it back then for possible action.
Mr. Mayor, move adoption on first reading. This is ordinance 15-10766, application M14-24 filed by the Salina City Planning Commission, requesting review and possible amendment of the bicycle route map, figure 2-10 of the Salina-Kansas Comprehensive Plan to substitute an internally-produced bicycle master plan map that would more clearly depict the goals and priorities of the cycling community than the current bicycle route map in the comprehensive plan document.
Second. Motion is second to adopt ordinance number 15-10766. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0. That takes us to, I believe, other businesses. Is there any other business before our other business?
I did have a little other business for the public, viewing public. I just wanted to issue a plea to the citizens of Salina to get involved on their boards and commissions. I was just astonished to see the vast number of boards and commissions that have so many vacancies. And one in particular, the Animal Control Advisory Board, I know that's always been a hard board to fill, but there are seven vacancies and no interest forms. There are only about three people on the nine-member board who make decisions for that board, and that has to do with our pets and our animals and our cats and our dogs, and I think that's a very important board. And I would hope that other people would also get involved. There are three vacancies on the Accessibility Advisory Board. As we grow older, we're going to need more accessibility. We need to look at those issues, and we need people on those boards to take that. And this really doesn't take a lot of time. Some of those boards only meet once a quarter. We're heavily, seems like most of the managing boards are heavily seated with the male people in our community. We need some women on those boards, is what I'm trying to say, I guess. And I'd really like to see some of the women get out and get more involved in the community as well as, of course, everyone. The Heritage Commission is another commission. We've looked at the Lee Building, and we've looked at the St. John's Hospital Building. The Heritage Commission needs people also on that board, and I think they're appointed again in August or September.
August, yeah.
Yeah, you need to have an expression of interest form, and, you know, I'm just, I'm just really surprised because it seems like 2% of the community are leading the other 98%, and it just, you know, it doesn't take that long to get involved, and I just encourage you to do that.
Yeah, I was interested to see there were at least a few more women.
A few more.
Information that filled out the proper, and we did place a few of them, but you're right, it's majority all male that put in, and we're getting there, but we could still use a heck of a lot more. I mean, it was, I was surprised to see empty spots on some of them.
Well, and our minority community needs to be more involved on those boards, too. It's just, it's just kind of a traditional thing, I guess, that some of the Planning Commission, some of those commissions are dominated by men, and we need to have more people on that. Salina Airport Authority and those boards all need to have more diverse memberships. That's all I've got.
Good. Good point, though.
I have, I have a couple of questions. One is, and they pertain to state legislative actions concerned that have, that are concerned to not only our city but other cities in the state and how they, how they affect, and a couple of them this week, one is elections and the other one is the, I don't know what the best way that liquor and grocery stores bill, whatever, whatever that one's called, 2200?
So the second one, the liquor and grocery stores, that would be to allow liquor sales in grocery stores with, which would presumably have the impact of hurting the small package mom-and-pop shops.
Right.
Yes.
And so my purpose for bringing this up in other businesses is, do you have an update? I understand you might have an update on city elections or municipal elections?
There's a, I don't have the detail in front of me, but there's a committee meeting Wednesday on a Senate bill to address elections specifically. It's a pretty long bill, I'm not sure what all they're getting into, but the main points of it, they would move municipal elections from spring to fall on the same fall years that you would see the state and federal elections, and also would make them partisan. And I've got, I kind of already anticipated from last year where you guys fall with that, so I've got a response I can provide, and I actually, depending on my schedule, may try to go that way and testify personally on that particular issue. There's no question, the timing is a concern, the partisanship is a tremendous concern, especially in our form of government. It's ironic, the commission manager form of government, nationally known as the council manager form, was created in the early 1900s as a direct response to bad government because of political patronage and the spoils and the unethical behavior and illegal behavior in governments that came out of politics, dirty politics, and so forth. And so our form was supposed to take on, and I think does to the degree you can in a public setting, the business approach to government. So it's a mixture. Well, if you, if you make the elections partisan, I think that's over, in my opinion.
I hope you will testify. I hope you will attend that and testify.
Do you need a consensus from this board to, for us to ask you?
Doesn't hurt.
To supply?
Yeah.
Because I think that, that it is, and I think just by judging from today's meeting or any other meeting, we're not talking about partisan political subjects up here. We're talking about things that we need to do to make our city a better place, and they don't have anything really to do with partisan politics, and I think that those things can tend to get in the way and form wedges between people working together to get things done. Also, I think, you know, we, we don't have a real good history of partisan, you know, elections that we do have locally that are partisan. I think it tends to be a one-party perspective, and there's really not a whole lot of sharing of ideas, so. I would, for one, hope that we could, and I know you did prepare something last year, and we kind of went through the same process, and it was, it was a good message, and I think it's right in line, too, with the League of Kansas Municipalities' position that partisan elections are not conducive to good government, so.
Yeah, if you'd like to make a motion that I prepare written testimony and make every effort to attend to provide verbal testimony, that works fine.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second to send, or to make Jason write a informative letter to our often uninformed state brethren.
Do we have to add this on, or are we just, or are consensus good?
Consensus is really.
Consensus is fine. I'm planning, I know where you fall on this issue. Usually, most of the issues are pretty clear when they're really taking something away from cities. If there's an issue that's, where I feel like it really splits your thinking as far as where you would fall on that, I, those issues would come to you before you, the committee or anyone, or legislators would see anything from the city, but usually it's pretty easy.
Yeah, basically you just need a consensus from us, and, yeah, I think we're all there.
Well, the other thing, too, in that is that it does, it does add some confusion as to where existing terms are. Commissioner Crawford and I are slated to be on till the, till the spring of 2017, and these things, if they take place in even number of years, does that mean we go, we have to serve longer? Or does that mean they cut our terms short?
Shorter.
I'm sure out of the 60-some pages that it will address, I would assume that you're probably going to be cut short, but I don't know that.
It'd be cut short in November, probably, if that.
Very possibly.
Well, and seeing the people would lose out because they were expecting a full term from us, so.
Well, sure they would.
It's a shame, really.
Well.
Well, and I think it would only be fair, then, that if it becomes partisan, that we receive the exact same retirement benefits, et cetera, et cetera, shared by our state brethren, and put an undue extreme burden on the taxpayers of the state of Kansas. Might make them take a little more notice in how these bills affect themselves locally because Democrats, Republicans, Whig Party, Hari Krishnas, whoever, like to fix potholes. That doesn't require partisan politics, and it just gets in the way, as everybody said, of doing good city government. In fact, there was a TED Talk a few years ago talking about how mayors actually tend to do it right. I assume they were talking about me, but, but, but basically, we don't get into partisan politics. The city, the citizens have complete access to us. They come tell us what they need. It's an immediate problem. We go out and fix it. Partisan politics, none of that gets in the way. That being said, is there any way to know if our own local representatives are in any way, shape, or form responsible for this or going along with this or sponsoring this? Is there, have we seen anything to find out?
I just got the alert earlier today and haven't had a chance to look deeply at it, but I can ask.
Right. The last thing we need, and I think the citizens, this is where, again, community engagement, I mean, I know Ms. Crawford was talking about getting on boards, but the citizens need to be informed that this is the kind of thing, that this is what adds bureaucracy and discontent to government, these sort of things. We've seen how well it's worked on a national level. I think the citizens are pretty tired of it. I think you see it, and I think. I think the citizens are pretty tired of it, I think you see it, and I think the last thing we need to do is bring a bad idea home.
What's mind-boggling to me is that you would think that most issues that go to the state level have a groundswell of support from our local governments.
Right.
And I don't think, I've talked to anyone that's in favor of this move, at least on the local level.
Right.
And the other part that's also more difficult, actually, for the school board elections than it is for us, is that they like to start at the beginning of the fiscal year, which makes sense. Well, if that's July, so they sit around from, get elected in November, then sit around until July to take office? That doesn't make sense either.
Well, it gives them time to think up all those important bills, like some of the ones they brought up last year that we won't go into, but, you know.
One last thing on the liquor sales and grocery stores, that would, which I think would harm local businesses. I don't know if that's something that, you know, I don't know how anybody feels about that, if you feel like you know enough to kind of have a...
Nebraska does it.
Consensus on that. Yeah. My concern is this, and I'll just make this real quick. My concern is that not only are you taking businesses that are currently in business, I don't know the number of liquor stores, outlets that we have right now, do you have any idea? I'm going to think probably north of 20. But, you know, each one of those is employing people, they're paying property taxes on their businesses, their properties, that they're doing business out of. And, you know, they're providing in some places, areas and neighborhoods with occupied buildings. And I just think that, you know, you take these into the grocery stores, you're going to lose employees, because they're not going to hire anybody else, they're just going to run it through the checkstand. So we're going to lose those, we're going to have buildings boarded up, because, you know, they're going to run small establishments out of business.
I will admit, but, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, I would agree with you if we had competition. As it stands now, no matter which liquor store you go into, everything's the same price. How often do you see a liquor store?
I don't know that, is that true?
How often do you see a liquor store advertising? There's no reason to, because everything's basically the same price. If you go buy beer, the beer manufacturers make the price labels for them to put on the racks, so everybody has the same price for beer. It doesn't, you know, that part of it, I think, could be changed.
Well, on the other hand, you know, in the city, you only really have, right now, two grocery distributors, which is even less competition. I will admit, when I moved to California in 89, I was not used to seeing liquor sold in grocery stores. In fact, it caught me very off-guard. But as I'm thinking of how it was when I left in 1999, I can't, right now, recall where a single, separate liquor store was anywhere near my house. I know there were some in Los Angeles, but the grocery stores basically took, and it was available. I think, I know beer and wine was available on Sunday, they may have curtailed some during church hours on Sunday, but the individual, well, actually, I do remember one in South Pasadena now, but, you know, probably within a 20-mile radius of my house, I can only think of one. So there clearly is a weeding out of the individual store.
And I say this a bit tongue-in-cheek, but, you know, we just were talking about a bicycle master plan. If we have 20 scattered around the community, there's probably one within bikeable distance of our house.
That's right.
I mean, if we go to the grocery stores, everybody's going to have to drive to the liquor store.
Well, and while I, I mean, I tend to agree a little bit with Commissioner Hardy as to a free trade of market, I get that, but we have restrictions in other businesses, so it's not uncommon that we're there. But I think that you're right. I think the Vice Mayor brings up some good points about, you know, the mom-and-pop stores, or even our larger ones, or employing local people, they're filling buildings. But, I mean, we all sort of, you know, grocery stores basically grew into one big thing. We no longer have the meat cutter, who knows to cut the meat we like, and the thing, you know? And I'm not a big liquor connoisseur, there probably was a time in my 20s when I was, but when I go, I want somebody who knows where, you know, or they, you know, if I say, you know, I've got some friends coming over, I'm having fish, I don't know what wine I need, you know? I think you lose a little of that quality, I think, that happens out. And I guess you could even say, from a standpoint of the kids with mom and pop at the grocery store, do they need to be subjected to, you know, an entire aisle of liquor? I mean, I don't, I mean, there's just different thought processes in it, and I get where Commissioner Hardy is going with, you know, it's a free trade, just let everybody do what they do and let the chips fall where they may. But I think I lean a little bit more towards keeping it privatized, and a little, or privatized isn't the right word, but a little more secluded to special stores, if you will. It just makes a little more sense.
It doesn't sound like we'd probably have a consensus on that one, but do we, can you tell us when, if we wanted to individually submit testimony? Do you know when the deadline for that would be?
For that bill, I don't.
Okay.
If you, I should ask you, how many of you get the League of Kansas Municipalities' legislative alerts and information?
Well, I think Holly sends those to us, because I saw the...
Okay, so all of you get that? That's the key to pay attention to. And also, once you find the bill number, you can go on to the state of Kansas webpage, you can go under Government, you'll go under Legislative, you'll look at Bill Tracking, and you can put that number in, and you can see that stuff coming up. So that's the best way to do that. I'd say the only issue is that, you're right, it didn't look like you had consensus on this issue. That would be definitely one I would bring to you before I would kick something out. But given that, if you are split on the issue and you want to provide individual comments, I think that's probably fine. You probably will want to present those as individuals, so as not confuse the legislators of the committee and so forth, as to, you know, I got this from the city of Salina, well, I got that from the city of Salina. So as long as you do that, I think that's perfectly fine.
Hey, one other quick thought, if you're done on that, and before we go to our other business. We had discussed a few weeks ago taking a 12% pay cut to pay for the employee breakfast from the commissioners. Do, and we, I think, came up with the best concept was to let city staff know that we just wanted that withheld and put into a special fund. Is that up and available for us to?
I have to look at Greg, because I don't know if our HR department had any legal questions. My understanding is, is the concept is fine, I think we can administer it. I don't think there was a hang-up question on that, that I'm aware of.
My understanding was, from talking with Natalie, that there was an opportunity for any of you who might wish to, to elect, to take that course of action, and I believe she had a format that was developed for that purpose.
So can I put the pressure on the other commissioners to just, like, openly, publicly say, like, I want to give my 12%, and can we do that here?
I don't know if 12% is a lot of pressure, but I'd say go ahead.
Okay, well, I would ask that you add my name to the list, have 12% of my check taken away for the employee's appreciation, well, whatever, fine, but I assume we'll kind of generally use it for the employee appreciation breakfast.
Second that.
Yeah. What she'll need to do is just come by the office, she'll have you fill out whatever form, and then we can do that. We'll need you to sign something.
Okay. You're good?
Are we okay with the other?
I brought it up.
I know, I was just making sure you're still on board. 12% is a lot of money. I'm just, you know...
Are we okay to go to personnel now?
Okay, go by and fill out the format if you want. I'd like to have 100% on that, so we'll just see. Okay, go ahead.
Oh, okay, so I need to, to... Oh, okay. I move to recess into executive session for 45 minutes to discuss with legal counsel matters, subject to the attorney-client privilege, for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matters, and for the purpose of discussing matters pertaining to non-elected city personnel, for the reason that public discussion of the matter would violate the privacy rights of the non-elected personnel involved, and reconvene at, hmm?
Seven thirty.
Forty-five minutes? Seven thirty?
Sounds good.
Seven thirty?
Seemed fair enough. Seven thirty, okay. Motion, we have a second on there, is that correct?
Second.
Okay, motion is second to move into executive session for 45 minutes and reconvene at 7:30. Do we anticipate any business?
With regards to the legal item, no, I would have to probably defer to you on the personnel item, but I'm assuming not.
I'm going to go with I doubt it, but, okay, maybe. Depends on how you act in there.
We'll see. Sounds like a resounding no, so, for the purposes of the media, of course.
Vote.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
We're in executive session.
You will have the latest on NPR's Morning Edition.